I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a special city council meeting, May 17th, 2021. And we're going to be talking about Canyon City's Energy Franchise Committee, conducting interviews for that. And then after we do that process, we're going to be doing interviews for the open seat on city council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Hockes. Councilmember Reed. Here. Councilmember B Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammer.
Here.
Mayor Smith. Absent.
Thank you. So let me speak just a little bit about the about the process we're going to use here. We do have our our resolution. It's resolution number six. And what we told ourselves and set the structure up for the energy committee as that it could be composed of up to nine members. This would include two to three Canyon City business owners, two to three Canyon City residents, two Canyon City Energy Future members, potentially one Fremont County Commissioner and two Canyon City Council members. We have received applications. We did not receive any applications for from people identified as business owners. The I would ask if any of the applicants consider themselves a business owner that are here this evening. And I see we have no one on Zoom. See, no one stepping forward for that. What that means then, council, is that is that we will choose two Canyon City Energy Future members. We only have two applications. And then we have three seats to fill for residents. And we essentially have seven people to choose from. So we're going to choose three from seven. And so what what we'll do is we'll, I think we'll interview the ask the two Canyon City Energy Futures members to speak to us. And I think that we'll we'll ask the other applicants for the energy committee to gather in the antebroom. While we conduct the interviews, we'll call you one at a time. We'll probably go alphabetical order. And and proceed to call you in one at a time to conduct an interview. And then after that, we will vote on the on the three candidates that that council wants to choose. So with that, the let's have the let's have the Canyon City Energies Future people here, which are Carol Dunn and Emily Tracy. Perhaps you could get up and and tell us a little bit about what your interest is and what you hope to accomplish on the committee.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Potem and council. I'm Emily Tracy, applicant for one of the two Canyon Cities Energy Future positions on the city's Energy Advisory Committee. I've had a home in Canyon City since 1977, served on the city council from 1983 until 1992. I have a master's degree in public administration with an emphasis in environmental management. I founded Canyon Cities Energy Future, or we call it CCEF sometimes, in January 2018 because of my concerns about the high electric bills here. And those bills affect everyone, every resident, every business, and every governmental entity. CCEF members have worked with consultants, a former member of the Public Utilities Commission, and community members in Pueblo and others to learn more about potential power options for the community. We have also researched what other communities have done to seek greater local control of their energy. We have a number of ideas for for the city's energy committee to pursue, such as talking with experts in electric power, talking with communities that have municipalized, and communities like Pueblo, which have explored municipalization. We can explore potential or any potential that there might be with rural electric associations, such as San Isabelle Electric and Sangre de Cristo Electric, both of which serve parts of Fremont County. And we can get involved with legislation at the state level. There's a number of bills related to electricity and energy in general that are running through the legislature this this season. There are many resources that can assist the new committee. I suggest beginning with the February 1st, 2021 Public Utilities Commission Electric Retail Rate Survey Report, which not only outlines how rates for investor-owned utilities are determined, but clearly illustrates our electricity costs here are far too high. Canyon City's Energy Future can serve as an ongoing resource for the work of the city's Energy Advisory Committee, assisting with gathering information and doing outreach, for example. I look forward to working with the city on this important issue. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. Carol, would you care to say a few words?
Yeah, I have a few, and most of them back up what Emily said. High electric prices, of course, you know, affect every person in the Black Hills service area, not just Canyon City. And even if you're lucky or forward-thinking enough to have solar, you're still paying through public entities that are funded by your tax dollars, the schools, your church, public buildings, streetlights, and businesses who have to charge to meet the bottom line. All these would benefit from more affordable electric bills. Every household would get a break to their budget, which would boost their ability to support a vibrant community. And there are ways. Many smaller, poorer communities than ours have made the move away from stockholder-driven companies to being the master of their own fates. We owe it to our families, our businesses, our neighbors to take a serious look at the alternatives. Our committee can serve to bring forward those alternatives, weigh the pros and cons, and hopefully come to an informed answer. I don't have a business right now, but I do have that outlook from formerly having a business, Hilltop Market, which we closed in 2018. And our bottom line was definitely affected by the demand charge, for instance, that Black Hills had in place, which they got rid of March after I closed the business. But, you know, there were many factors. But even then, even though the demand charge went away, somebody else is paying those higher those high rates as well. And I think that that's my main focus is to help the businesses. My neighbors, myself, have a better community. Because when things are this, the rate, our bills are this high, someone coming into this community is going to take a look somewhere else when they find out what their electric bills are going to be. Thanks very much for putting this committee together, and I look forward to serving with each and every one of you.
Thank you, Carol. And so what I'd like to do now is invite all the other applicants for the energy committee, except for Richard Claude Felter, to Cindy, can you get them situated in the back room? And then we'll call you out after we've talked with Richard one at a time.
Go ahead and start.
Hang on just a second, and we'll we'll give Cindy a minute or two to to do her job. But Richard, you're welcome to stand there. You're also welcome to sit at the at the table there. Whichever you feel more comfortable at is is fine.
This is fine.
Okay, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested on being on the energy committee?
Well, thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk to you tonight. I have, well, I grew up in Canyon City. I lived out in the park, but then I went to school and service and came back. And I did own a business here in town. It's since been closed down, the Helms Drug Out by the Hospital. That's where I started my journey as a pharmacist. I am retired from that now. And I have been, we have lived here since 89 as a return to Canyon City. And I just wanted to see a possibility of getting involved with, I don't want to say politics, but city workings. I was involved in Kremlin for quite a while. I did quite a few things in Kremlin. But when we moved here, I had kids, and we just sort of put that on standstill, and I haven't been involved. But I really would like to get involved. This looked like a good place to start because it was a chance to sort of, I don't know, keep the city council, keep the government sort of accountable for the electric charges that are in this town. And we just need to keep the residents and the businesses involved and informed on what's going on.
Thank you. The I suggest, council, that we kind of just use a rotating schedule that we just go down one at a time and and ask a question. And the if that if that makes sense to everybody. Frank, would you like to get us started?
Yeah, that's fine. My question is going to be to you is, when you first heard about us wanting to establish this council, what was the first thing that came to your mind with regards to what it's supposed to do or try to do, what it's supposed to hopefully accomplish? And then where do you look at yourself with regards to those two questions that I put before you first?
Okay, do you? I didn't understand the first part of the question.
First of all, when you heard about it.
The opening on the committee.
What was your thought when you first heard about it, your thought? And then secondly, when you considered putting it in there, what do you feel is the purpose in your mind for this council? And then your goals that you think will fit into that, how does that take place? So first of all, when you heard about it, what was your thought? What did you think about this kind of a committee?
Well, it's, this was, went through a lot of thinking about it. I wanted to be involved in it because it's somewhere down the line, it's going to affect my dollar that it goes to the paying for electricity. And we need to look out for our individual and our residents of this town on the price that is charged. And I was wanting to become involved in that. And I think if I served on the committee, that I would have good input. I would do research on why there was a tremendous increase in price. And I would like, you know, I would like to keep them informed, council and residents informed, on why we are having this problem and why we, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I did some research where we lost a franchise monies to the city of like $50,000. And that's a lot of money to be just giving away. So I would like to be involved in that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Reed.
So I have a two-part question for you. First of all, are you familiar with the recent ballot measure in regards to the Black Hills franchise? And if so, what would you have liked to see the outcome be?
Well, I what I did is it advertisement, advertisement sways a lot of people. And I think it could have been handled a little bit different. I don't think the public was informed like they should have been. I think it was a like a one-way, sort of like a ramrod that people saw the bad part of it. I think there's got to be some good parts to it. And I think Black Hills would be willing to work with the council, with city, whatever needs to be done to bring that into into line with the thoughts of the people, the residents of the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
I was just wondering if you're familiar with the city's charter?
Not I, I would say generally, yes. But.
But you haven't read it?
No, no, I have not read the charter.
Thank you, Richard. The, you know, the the issues, the issue presented to the public in the in the last election concerning the franchise was a simple yes or no. Should the city be allowed to enter into a franchise agreement with Black Hills? There were a lot of corollary issues raised at that time, you know, concerning rates and things like that. And but the nonetheless, part of what city council wants to do is find out what what the residents of Canyon City actually voted on, what they thought they were deciding. In that election, what did you think the 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 public was being asked to decide?
I don't think the public was informed entirely, you know, they personal reasons, I think that there was a lot of people that were negative and that said that the city should not be able to do that. And I don't believe people understood the ballot itself. My wife, for example, she says, what does this mean? And it I talked to a few people that say that they didn't really understand what was going on, that they were, you know, it wasn't presented as well as it could be.
Thank you. Councilmember Dennehy.
This is a, this is a subject that, like you said, the way it was presented, and I think we all have our opinions on everything that was went through there. Getting an electricity company or for this to change, for Canyon City to obtain new energy is not as easy as it seems because the Public Utilities Commission does set these. And I guess, have you done any folk or research or just even reading on that to see about any other communities or, you know, recently Boulder tried and and that went down. And, you know, Pueblo was going to try, but then they voted not to. And I just didn't know if you've read about any other communities in Colorado or seen anything where anybody else has actually.
I haven't done this. Checked other communities, just just Pueblo and Boulder. I've read what? I guess you would say a news type thing. I didn't research into it at all. But I just read what had happened.
Okay.
So, you know, it's, it could, I could do a little bit more research on it, but I did not do that.
No, and I understand that. I was just curious if you'd looked into it a little more. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Hi, thank you for being here. Um, I know this position is, there's a lot to learn as you would come into a position like this. There's so much to learn about this, this this topic. But in your mind, what's a realistic expectation on a solution?
I would like to see a working agreement probably between the franchising from Black Hills and the city. As my understanding that this franchise fee that we, the resident or the consumer pays, is given back to the city, if I, that was my understanding. And the city has lost out on that money, that income. I would like to see something that would work out where possible that Black Hills and the city could work out an agreement to work together. Because I think it would be hard. Black Hills provides a lot of the, like the poles and lines and things like that on there. And that's something that the city would have to, if they didn't work with Black Hills or a company. It's my understanding that they would have to find the place that provides that kind of stuff. So. But I would just like to see some sort of working agreement. It doesn't have to be Black Hills, but it would, they have been the main source for quite a few years. I don't even know how long, but it would, it would be a good idea to, you know, they've had the experience, cities worked with them before. So I would like to see some sort of working agreement between them.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from council? Then thank you, Richard, for that. And if you would, follow Cindy and and you can, since we've already interviewed you, you can you can either sit in the audience or wait with the others at your at your option.
Yeah, I'll just sit out here.
Sure. Good evening.
Hello, council.
You're Warren Hart, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Hi.
Hi.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and and why you're interested in in being here tonight?
Okay. Yeah. We've, my wife Nell and I moved here about 2005. And you know, probably going to live here the rest of my life, or our lives. And you have a lot of interest in the community. Mountain bike a little bit, kayaks some too, and have a lot of interest in Whitewater and in the town itself. I I'm heavily involved in improving the river corridor. I work with WKRP, which is now Royal Gorge Rio. We were responsible for everything that's been done in the Whitewater Park and in Centennial Park. And we also help out with the Whitewater Festival. And, you know, that's kind of the the main reason I do that. And kind of the main reason I want to be on the committee is I do plan on living here the rest of my life. And I just want to improve the town itself. So that's pretty much me. And that's my reasons behind doing everything. I don't really have any ulterior motives besides that, just to make the town better so that it'll be a cool river town for all of us.
Thank you. And now we're going to have council members ask questions. And let's let's follow the same format, if that's okay, and and start again with with Councilmember Hockes. You want to start at that? Okay, Dolly, you're up.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you for being here. So my question is, what do you think a realistic expectation is in finding a solution for our energy resources?
I think I think the realistic solution is going to have to be changes with with the way that Black Hills, you know, it'd have to be with the Public Utilities Commission in Black Hills.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Let me get a little closer to it.
You could pull that up, too.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's going to have to be at a higher level. You know, it's probably going to have to be through the Public Utilities Commission and working with Black Hills. You know, I think the problem is finding some way to allow us to go to move forward to, you know, to, I think it's difficult for us to try to work around the legal aspects to try to, you know, do our own generation, to create our own generation. I think, in my opinion, I think that that's just way too much for us to bite off as a small town.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Warren, first, I just want to say thanks for, you know, being part of the, you know, the Whitewater, whether it was with WKRP or, you know, real, it's just thank you for that. And and, you know, this is a tough subject for, you know, changing the public utilities, you know, is a very hard thing to do. We've seen other communities try and fail. I'm wondering if have you studied any of those communities or or even looked at them, you know, Boulder, Pueblo? I mean, I mean, we've read about them in the news, but it's a or do you think this is an accomplishable, accomplishable feat that we're that we're trying to do here?
Do you mean to create our own municipal utility?
Yeah, whether you a municipal utility or going with a different utility company?
I I truly believe that, and I have with interest followed everything that happened in Boulder and Pueblo. And I just, I truly think it's too big of a task. And it's, I worked for municipal utility in Austin, Texas for 23 years. It was a bigger municipal utility, a lot bigger. But I'm just, I've been in the power production business. And I just think that all of the equipment and the personnel required to do that, to create your own generation on a large scale, is just too much for us to take on. And the upkeep of it, you know, just the generation portion. And I'm just speaking generation. I don't know anything about the transmission portion of it. So the generation of it, unless it's on a smaller scale, you know, if you, you know, if if we were allowed to have like distributed generation, small pockets like that, that's that's a possibility, I think. But I don't know how that works legally as far as tying into the Black Hills system. Perfect, thanks.
Thank you. Warren, you know, we we just had an election where the franchise, whether to adopt the franchise, grant the franchise to Black Hills or not, was on the ballot. And part of what we're doing, city council is doing, is trying to determine what the voters thought, you know, about that issue. And whether they, whether they, you know, there were, there were a lot of corollary issues raised during during that period. And I'm interested in what what you thought the question that was put to the voters was and how you felt about it.
I I believe that most of the voters that voted against it were thinking of their electrical rates. And, you know, thinking that this was a way to possibly get cheaper rates through Black Hills instead of it just being about the franchise agreement. And, you know, what what Black Hills and how it worked both ways for the city of a city of Canyon City. So that's, that's the way I saw it. I personally, when I read it and found out, you know, that what the franchise agreement dealt with, and especially the part that we weren't really bound to not look for other alternatives for power. Being that I do things working in the river, and I know how sometimes the city is strapped for money for different things. To me, I hated to see the possibility of losing $500,000 franchise fee, which goes a long ways toward making Canyon City a better, you know, that's a year, if that's yearly, that's going a long ways to make Canyon City a better place to live. And I don't know if it trickles down to my projects and things that I like to do. But I can't think, help but think that without that money, we'd be a lot poorer.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
I was just wondering if you are familiar with or have read the city's charter?
I have not. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Reed.
So Mayor Pro Tim took a little bit of my pieces, so I'm going to kind of rephrase. But if you were appointed to the committee, what would you be advocating for after the research that you have done in understanding the franchise agreement, the prior ballot measure? What do you feel would be your personal stance?
I think I would firstly try to to work with Black Hills. I would, you know, as far as trying to get a better deal. And then I see nothing wrong with going going forward to the Public Utilities Commission and trying to get some better rates, to see if that's, if there's any way or any route to do that. That would be the first thing I would try.
Thank you. Councilmember Hockes.
My question going to be, and it's a two-part. Before you voted with the election, how many meetings did you either listen to or heard about that the council had prior to this going to the vote of the public?
The actual council meetings, I, the council meetings themselves?
Yes, I mean, I just want to know how familiar you are were before you voted as to how many. as to how many meetings we had as a council before it even went to the vote of the public?
Oh, the total number of, I, I wasn't aware of the total number of meetings. I'm sure you guys went through a lot of meetings.
Okay, but did you, did, did you hear any of those yourself, sir?
No, sir.
Okay.
I was, I was just doing my research from reading.
And, and the only reason I'm asking, because it's very important, in my opinion, for me, to look at the people that we decide to put on this board, what kind of knowledge they have with regards to what we as the city tried to accomplish before it went to the vote of the public. And it's, I'm not saying this, it's your fault for not going, you, because you have a life of your own. But it's important for us to know, because some of your answers you gave with regards to how you feel about what the city should do or can do in the future are very important. But I appreciate your honesty with regards to the question I asked you. Thank you very much, sir.
Sure.
Thank you. And what we'll do now is, Warren, that's, that's the end of our direct questions. And if you'd like, you can either sit in the audience or go back to the room. The, but you're welcome to sit here if you'd like and listen to the others respond.
Okay. Thank you, Will. Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening.
Good evening, Doug.
My name is Doug Cohen. Glad to see you all. Know most of you. I would like to be on this committee. I've been on many other committees. I'd like to give you a little bit of a background, what I've done, where I came from. I came from the Great Central Valley in California. I've lived here for 51 years. My children were born and raised in this area. I was a meet inspector for USDA for 40 years. So I'm familiar with regulations and how government works. I'm also familiar with enforcing those regulations. And I think it's very important that we have regulations and that the company that provides us with our energy provides us with a smooth, steady flow of that energy, whether it be during good times or during stormy times like we've had this evening. My first experience with serving Canyon City was on the Board of Zoning Adjustment, on which I served for several years. I was, it was imperative to know city regulations and how to apply them in various zoning matters. I've also served on the Arkansas River Corridor Committee and the Arkansas River Extension Study Group. While on these different committees, it was imperative that one worked with other members to try and reach a beneficial and reasonable outcome. Presently, I serve as President of the Canyon City and Oil Creek Ditch and have served in that capacity for 21 years. I am also President of Fremont-Custer County Farm Bureau. And I also serve on the Committee for Four Mile Community Club. I have approx, I have four members of the family, some close, some not so close, that work for power companies, some in California for Pacific Gas Electric and some here for Black Hills. And some for Fountain, I think it's XL, I'm not real sure. Anyway, so I am somewhat familiar with the complexities or what it takes to keep the power running here. I'm not familiar with the administrative part of it and the fee makeup or how they come about their fees. I do believe that if you're gonna run a company, you need to be in that business, not only to provide a service, but you also need it to make money. There needs to be that element. And what I am acquainted with, with the power companies, it's very expensive to keep the lines up. It's very expensive to buy specialized equipment. And so, I realize that it's expensive. But I personally don't mind paying those fees. I like the idea of being able to turn my switch on and off and get power, plug in my toaster and have power there and such. So, anyway, I don't have any great big spiel. I don't have any great knowledge of what it takes to, what can I say? Structure fees. But I do have a common sense approach to things, which I think is necessary, along with the fact of technical aspects of businesses. And being a more mature citizen as I am, I'm not old, I'm just mature. I think I can provide that common sense part of it, along with my past service with different committees, both city and rec district and such. So, I, I would like very much to be able to serve the citizens of Canyon City and serve on this committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug.
You bet.
What we'd like to do now is let individual members of council ask questions. And so, we'll start with Councilmember Hockes.
Doug, how you doing?
Good, how are you, Frank?
Good, good. My question is gonna be to you is, do you feel, either way, yes or no, that the city did an adequate job and presentation to the public with regards to what we tried to accomplish before we put this to the vote of the public?
I think you probably did. I think no matter how many newspaper, radio, whatever, and no matter what you put out there, society in general today has become complacent and they do not look into situations. And therefore, I don't think maybe enough people knew enough about it.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Keep making that toast.
Councilwoman Reed.
Thank you for being here tonight and taking the time to meet with all of us. Are you familiar with the recent ballot measure in regards to the Black Hills franchise? And if so, what would you have liked to see the outcome be?
How would I like to see the outcome? Is that what you're asking? Different than what it was? I believe we, Black Hills, yes, it's expensive. I believe they do a good job. They keep the power running in this city. I don't know if the general public's aware, but they always, they provide lighting, all the streetlights in town and everything. And so, I would like to have seen this process not have to go forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Cohen, I'm looking at all your experience here on your, on your letter of interest that I was just wondering if you're familiar with or have read the city's charter?
Have I read the city charter?
Yes.
No, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Doug, thank you for being here tonight. You know, part of what council is trying to do here is understand what, what happened in the election, what citizens actually thought they were voting on. From your perspective, did, did you have a good grasp of what you were, the decision you were being asked to make and what that meant for the city?
I think I did. And like I said, I look at things, if it's not broken, don't fix it, don't try to, if it's working. And I think Black Hills does a fine job.
Thank you. Councilmember Dennehy.
Hi, Doug.
Hi, Tim.
I'm gonna follow up on that a little bit. Did, do you know that the city lost a $500,000 revenue from Black Hills when we voted that, that down?
I had heard that, yes.
Okay. What are your thoughts on that?
I find that very unfortunate. Like I say, I think we're going through a process that I think is unnecessary. And in the meantime, we lost that amount of money that could have been used either for, of some kind of infrastructure in this community.
Thank you, Doug.
You bet.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
I need to turn this on. We all know the results of the last ballot measure regarding the Black Hills franchise agreement. But would you have liked to see the, what would you have liked to see the results be? Well, we just answered that. But what do you think a long-term, realistic solution would be?
If the, if the community really feels that there is a glaring issue here, I'm not real sure what the outcome would be. I think that's why you're forming a committee, to get somewhat of an informed decision and different aspects and different thoughts coming in. So, what, what I see in the future is, I, I'm really not sure.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Doug. The, that's, that's the end of our questioning of you. You're welcome to take a seat in the audience and listen as we talk with other applicants.
Okay, thank you very much.
Cindy, do we have someone online?
We're not sure. I'm not sure if it's the right name. If you want to ask if this is her?
Sure. The, I can't quite read that screen name. Can you read that for me? Victoria?
But it would be Flo Arona.
Flo Arona. Do we have Flo Arona on the Zoom meeting tonight? Looks like that's still on mute.
Then I would assume we're good, well, I'll move on.
Okay. And council, just so you know, Lisa Pascoe is not here this evening. Next, I believe we'll be talking with Kirk Suther.
So, just so I'm clear, does that mean that they're no longer interested in being on the committee? Or there's not a?
The, the council members are free to reach whatever conclusions they want to about that.
Okay, it doesn't, it's not like an automatic anything. I was just, for the ones that were missing, that were not here tonight, that were on our list, I was just wondering if that removed them from consideration or if they were still, if there was anything automatic? I just was trying to understand. To that.
It's council's choice whether you want to.
So, so council can make of that whatever they choose and let that direct their voting. Kirk, good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested on being on the committee?
Yes. My name is Kirk Suther and I'm very interested in, in being on the Energy Committee because I think it's very instrumental in the long-term development of Canyon City. I just retired last year and worked in Kansas City, Kansas. And I worked with a couple of nonprofits for over 19 years. We did community development, economic development in different environmental projects. Excuse me. And then in 2005, I started working for the local government, the Unified Government of Kansas City, Kansas. And with, with that, I was able to do a lot of projects that we'd do some research and come up with new programming that were very community problems. I do have a master's degree in urban planning and an undergraduate degree in accounting. So I think that that helps me in doing a lot of research and I enjoy doing research. If I'd be, if I would be selected on the committee, I believe that, well, one thing that I did notice when we moved out last year, so all the billboards voting down Black Hills and we really didn't know what was going on. So I think the first thing that, that I would like to learn is a little bit more about what each side, because it's, it tended to be one side against another side, to see what the pros and cons are for the individuals that were against Black Hills. And then just to see what Black Hills had to offer the city. And I think that would be a good starting point to, to have that because then, then also you need to have a, take a look at the franchise committee. And it's my, my understanding that what would be the final product from the committee would be some sort of a report that would give some of the alternatives. Just without really going into a lot, I, it sounds like a lot of work has been done and I'd be very interested in, in being able to read and catch up with the different recommendations that have, or the research that has been done. But it looks, it looks to me like you have, initially, you have the option of doing nothing. You could be looking at doing something with a different private company. You have the option of public util, of, of a public utility owned by the municipality, because that's what Kansas City, Kansas had a Board of Public Utilities. Or, you know, you could work with the current provider. So I think that looking at this, it's not going to be something that's done right away because you're looking at multi-millions of dollars of investment. So, I believe that you, that the recommendations would need to be very practical in that, identifying some of those costs and how the cost might be done. And in addition, there might need to be another study done with someone that's, that's very highly qualified in that. I don't, at this point, I don't know. But I think, I think there's potential, but it, it's a very big project. And like I said, it's not gonna get done overnight, but I think that some progress could be made. And that's sort of the outline of how I, how I see it. And I think I could assist with, with the committee with my background.
Thank you. Councilman Dennehy.
Yeah, you've covered that, that very well. And, and as you moved here, welcome to Canyon City. And, and, but, you know, just looking at your, on your, on your resume here, it's, with the urban planning and that, I, I know that that's always been a part of, of what you've done. And I just want to know, just, this is just a personal question. How do you feel about your energy rates and with Black Hills?
You know, as a, as a resident, I didn't really see a significant difference with here and back in Kansas City, Kansas. Of course, the house that we have right now is smaller than what I had back there. So, you know.
Let me, may I do a follow-up? And just, just, so you really never gave it really any thought? It's our power company, there's your bill and kinda?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I did, but.
Yeah, I, it, it was maybe a little bit higher, but it, you know, it wasn't some as, as what they were saying earlier with the businesses. I don't, you know, I, I couldn't say for that, but my resident, it was a little higher than what. But a lot of other things are cheaper.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The, I didn't mean to skip you there, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Did you have another question?
I do, I do have a follow-up question, but my question you had answered in your, in your introduction, so thank you. You mentioned studies and doing some other legwork. Those Those kinds of things take money. How would you anticipate paying for those studies and other things like that?
Well, I think one of the responsibilities of the committee would be looking into where some possible grants might be. So that would be, like I said, you'd have, I think that, that would have to be identified where, where the money could come from.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kirk, actually, I, I had a question, but you answered it pretty thoroughly, I thought, in your remarks. So the, I'll pass then to Councilman Smith.
How's it going, Kirk?
Good, thank you.
I just wanted to ask if you were familiar with or have read the city's charter?
I have not read it completely, no.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed.
Your remarks really were thorough. I'm not just saying that at this point. I guess one of the things that I would like to know is if you are on this committee, obviously, there's going to be a great deal of time and energy put into being able to do a lot of research, to have conversations. Just the makeup of the committee alone has members that have, that a lot of passion and have spent a lot of time studying this out. Do you feel like you'll be able to commit yourself to the same level of passion and research and time to be able to express the views that you have?
Yes, I believe I, I could dedicate the time. I, like I said, I just have retired and I'm, I'm still not completely settled down to where I want to do nothing. So I think that it'd be, it'd be a nice project to work on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Councilman Hockes.
My question is going to be, have you heard about, read about what Pueblo went through when they was looking at creating their own utility, taking away from Black Hills? And then what Boulder was doing when they was looking at it? With regards to the amount of money that those two cities spent just to look at studies as to see whether or not they could even get involved in that? Now, looking at that, this is Canyon City. Do you feel that this town even comes close to being able to spend that kind of money to look at the projects that those two cities looked at and didn't go through? Because I like some of your answers with regards to research and everything else. But it's very important because this is a beautiful little town. So do you feel it would be a financial burden on us to do some of the studies that these two towns did to look at with regards to their franchise with their utilities?
Thank you for the question. I do believe you have a very good point there that you would just have to take a look at the feasibility of that. And if you, if the money's not there, you might not be able to conduct the, the studies like that. But you'd have to find the money. I agree with you that it does cost a lot of money when you have, when you have planners and when you have consultants. But I would just try to, try to find the money where we could get that taken care of.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. And you're welcome to take a seat where we have a couple of more interviews to go through.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm trusting that our city clerk is. Great.
Good afternoon, I'm Larry Winchester.
Thank you, Larry, for being here this evening. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on this committee?
Well, we've been in Canyon City for six years. We kind of like it, it's a nice town. I worked for public utilities for 35 years. Generation, transmission, distribution, communications, metering and relaying. A pretty broad background. And when the ballot issue came up in November, I, honestly, I was quite happy with our electricity. I mean, the rates are a little high, but the reliability is fantastic. We haven't had an extended outage in our area since we've been in Canyon City. I know when you look at your bill, when you add on all the different adders, that it does add up to quite a bit. Our basic rate of, of what, 10 to 13 cents a KWH isn't that high. It's all the adders and I'm not sure what all those are. I've got a list of them, but I don't understand a lot of them. The money that the Black Hills pays to the city, it's up to 6% and the rest of the adders sort of run along there with it. But I'm not sure where all that goes. I would like to see a safe, reliable utility because I've been in that business. I know what it's like to have an unsafe utility. And Canyon City does need some improvements. If you don't have a network, you have a lot of secondaries running open. Underground would be wonderful, but it's horribly expensive. So somewhere, there's got to be a means to where we can work together to find out what is best for the community. And even if we have to have a little bit of investment to get that type of utility, I think it would be worth it. Not just looking at the bottom line, but when you look at the, only at the bottom line is where you start getting into trouble, I believe. You've got to have something more than just bare bones. We need a viable, reliable electric utility.
Thank you. And now we're going to let individual council members ask questions and we'll start with Councilmember Hockes.
My question is going to be, I would like to know either how many or even if you did listen to councils' meetings that we had with regards to the Black Hills franchise before it went to the voters to decide yea or nay?
No, I did not.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Reed.
Are you familiar with the recent ballot measure in regards to Black Hills franchise in detail? And if so, what would you have liked to see the outcome be ultimately?
You know, I'm not sure what I would like to have seen the outcome. Like I said, I didn't know we were unsatisfied with it, dissatisfied with it until the election. And the fact that there is, there's always been a difference of opinion on electric utilities, how they operate, where the profit goes, who gets to keep what from where. But no, I wasn't really aware that there was so much dissatisfaction with our utility. Certainly not in, in our neighborhood anyhow. There's no discussion of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
How's it going, Larry?
Very good.
Good. I, I was just wondering if you are familiar with or have read the city's charter?
No, I have not.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight, Larry. The, you know, one of the things that we're, council is trying to understand is, you know, why the voters voted as they did in this last election. What was, what was your understanding of the question put to the voters and your feelings about that?
Well, my understanding was that it was more of an economical issue than a reliability of a public utility. I read the different comments in the papers about comparing our electric rates to, say, Breckenridge. Now, I haven't looked at Breckenridge real estate tax, what that is compared to Canyon City. Our, it's got to be somewhere close. But if, if we only have so much money, we have to decide where we're going to spend it. With the money from, if you use the money from your real estate to offset the cost of electricity or if you use the cost of electricity for capital improvements around the city, it sort of gets to be a skewed mixture where you don't really know which pocket the money is coming out of.
Thank you.
So I, yep.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Dennehy.
Well, a lot of this has been covered, but, and, and you just kind of covered it because what I ask is what your thoughts on, on the whole ballot issue was? And basically, you just wrapped that up and, and, or, and since you said your whole neighborhood is, or you hadn't heard any displeasure with Black Hills.
No, I have not. I've worked for Black Hills a little bit out at Pueblo and then up at the Canyon City West. I'm familiar with them, with some of the guys and their operation is good. I mean, they're the same as we had at Western Area Power. So I, I think they're confident. We've had callouts in our neighborhood and they're responded to almost immediately. You know, I mean, a car wreck last year took at one of the poles. They were there that afternoon to repair it. So for the service, I really have no complaint and our neighbors feel the same way.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Hi, thank you for being here. Now that you realize that there are some people who are unhappy with our energy source, what do you believe is a realistic expectation in finding a solution to our energy resources?
It would be so simple if we had one person to do everything, but that's not the way we work in our country. To form a consensus of getting a bunch of people to agree to still meet the guidelines of, of the local legislation, the local laws and all the regulations can, surrounding the electric utility, I think it would be hard to come to a consensus without a lot of input and a lot of research. I know there has been requests to purchase the utility by other entities and, and that doesn't seem viable because there's such a big outlay of capital that that would have to be repaid some way. I think if we can form a group where we can see what we've got and where we can go with it rather than just tear it down and rebuild it, would be in the best interest of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. We've got one more interview to do. You're welcome to take a seat in the, in, in our chamber and listen to the, listen to, let's wrap up the last interview. Thank you. Thank you, Cindy, for helping us here. Evening, Kathy.
Hi there.
So what we're going to do is, is take turns asking you some questions. But first, we'd like to give you a chance to tell us who you are, a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on the committee.
Okay. Some of you may have seen me before, I've been here before, talking about energy and so forth. But I'm Kathy Worthington. I am a retiree of Xcel Energy and it's actually a public service company doing business as, but it's always easier to say Xcel. I worked for them for 42 years, so I have one or two years of utility experience. And that's mainly the reason I have chosen to express my interest in being on this committee is to try and help lead people through the, I think the only thing more complicated in utilities are water rights. So it's one of those. And I just wanted to do what I can to give any, any information, knowledge or whatever to the city in this committee in hopes of leading you through this interesting prospect.
Thank you. Let's see, we're, Dolly, thank you.
I should say, I've lived in Canyon City for 21 years, so been here quite a while, know the city. So I really want to give back.
I would say the only, the only good thing about this particular study is that we don't have to fight over who gets the electricity, so.
That's right, that's exactly right.
Water might be a different thing. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Hi, thank you for being here. What do you believe a realistic expectation in finding a solution for our energy resources might be?
Trying to find a realistic one is, I think it's going to be how much brain damage are you willing to do? There's lots of opportunities, lots of potential for things besides, to look out there for other opportunities other than just what the same old investor-owned utility of Black Hills or anybody else is. So I think it gives us an opportunity to explore all of the options that are out there that many people don't know about. But that doesn't mean that the end of the day, you don't come back and say, boy, I like just what we got. But I think it's important to look at everything that's there and try and make the best, best answer or the best judgment based on what's best for the citizens of Canyon City.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dennehy.
Hello there.
Hi.
Looking at what, you know, Pueblo did by voting this down, looking at Boulder who tried for an awfully long time, as you're very well aware of, what do you think the chances of Canyon City actually being able to, to get something like this done? To go to a different public utility?
I think it's better than a 50-50 chance. Mainly because so many things have changed since what Boulder started to do or tried to do. There's so many other options out there. There's other companies out there willing to help make this happen. There, as far as Pueblo is concerned, there is so much back history I could provide to you regarding that that, that I won't go into tonight. But it's one of those to where frankly, I think it was a good example of advertising not always being as truthful and the word about the potential for it getting out to the voter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, one of the things that council is interested in doing is, you know, kind of looking into the minds of the voters to make sure that we understood, understand what, what their vote exactly meant. I know you're well aware of the issues presented by, by the franchise, yes or no on that franchise. But what, what are your thoughts on that? And the, what do you think about that, about that process?
Well, frankly, a franchise has nothing to do with rates. It does not, as you well know, the rates are still the same as they were when you had a franchise. The only thing right at the moment is, is that you as a city are losing 3%. And basically, I think my interpretation of a franchise fee when I started working with other towns and so forth was, is it helps the city pay for their own utility costs. It's kind of a wash. But I believe that the voters felt that this was an opportunity to kind of free the city up, to look at other alternatives without being tied to an actual franchise. So I'm sure from the general public, they're saying high rates where in reality, all it is, is setting up the right for them, for the utility to work in your city streets and things that way. But from the utility perspective, that's all they care about. From a voter's perspective, they're looking at it from the cost.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Hi, Kathy.
Hi.
I was just wondering if you're familiar with or have read the city's charter?
Probably not. I'll be the first one to say that, yes, I've read through a lot of the resolutions, like the most recent ones and things that way. I have to admit that that's probably one of the things I should have done before I came tonight, but no, I have not. I'm going to be very honest.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed.
Thank you for being here, Kathy. If you were on the committee, what would you say that you would be advocating for?
I would be advocating for correct information, facts. This is an issue that can affect the heart and the emotions of people because it affects their pocketbook. But I think it's smart to be able to analyze something from a business perspective and what's right and best for the city and also what's best for the, the people that live in the city. So the citizens.
Thank you. Councilmember Hockes.
Hi, Kathy, long time no see.
Yeah, how are you doing?
Good. The question I have is with regards to, I'm, I'm sure you're familiar and aware of the plans that city has with regards to expanding the river corridor, Highway 50 corridor and everything else. The reason I ask that is because I should have thought about it with all the other applicants is, should the committee, in a sense, look at those aspects too? Because if we grow in those areas that we're talking about, electricity and the cost of electricity is going to play a big role in, in those areas for development when we try to get people to come in and say, I want to develop a longer river corridor and the other portions of what we're talking about. So do you think that that's something with the committee? Once it's established, that also should be brought up with regards to the overall picture as to where this committee goes for the best interest of the citizens of Canyon City?
Absolutely. I think it would probably goes. I think it would probably goes in hand with the planning committee as far as what your future plans are. Having listened to the presentation about SCED, let's face it, if you're looking at primary jobs and which are more industrial factory-type jobs, energy is a huge issue. It's very expensive, it's a huge issue and so those will be something that I know from having been on the Pueblo Economic Development Corporation, that has lost people and companies coming to Pueblo because of the cost of energy. So I think you have to take that into consideration because you need to be able to offer them the best. We can go from all, everything, you can talk to them about how well, this is a great location, the people are great, there's great tourism and all this and that, but when it comes down to the bottom line, getting them here is going to involve dollars and cents and utility costs do add up.
Thank you Kathy, we're going to now, you're, you're our last person that we're interviewing, so you're welcome to take a seat.
Okay.
We're going to go ahead and vote on, so, so what we have, our resolution says that, said that we're going to have two from Canyon City Energy's future, we've had two apply. So I believe that unless I hear an objection, that those people will be seated on the committee. That would be Carol Dunn and Emily Tracy. We have six citizens that have requested to be on this committee. We have up to three slots for those and I suggest that we fill all three since we did not have any business people apply to be on the committee. And so what I, what I suggest we do is, is if you have a piece of paper in front of you, write down your, your top three choices and we'll have those collected by the city clerk who will do a little bit of vote tallying.
We actually have a vote, a point of order that was raised by our attorney.
Thank you.
Catherine, do you want to do an explanation? You need to do a voice vote.
Excuse me?
You need to do a voice vote.
We need to do a voice, a voice vote.
Yeah, so if you want to split up the nominations for the Canyon Energy Futures positions and deal with those and then deal with the public ones.
Okay, and but, but that would be a voice vote, is that correct?
Yeah, and so you have some options as to how you want to do it. Typically, the way you do that is you do multiple rounds, so there would be two, each council member would express their top two or three choices from the six applicants you have. Cindy will tally that and then you guys can take the top two choices and then you'll do another voice vote for your candidate. Does that make sense?
It does. The, could we, the, so let's, let's take care of the Canyon City Energy Futures first. So this is just, do we need a motion then for that or just a?
I would say a nomination from one of your council members and a second and a vote.
All right, do I hear a nomination from council for the two Energy Futures slots?
That would be Carol Dunn and Emily Tracy.
Correct, thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to make a nomination that we go ahead with Carol Dunn and Emily Tracy filling the two spots for the, for the Canyon City, or Energy Board.
Her Energy Committee, Franchise Committee.
Thank you.
Second. And we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Can I ask a clarifying question real quick? Does the mayor vote on this? No?
No.
Just wanted to make sure because this was different than other stuff we've done, so I just wanted to make sure. Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hachez.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll, this is, this is going to be the more difficult process, I'm afraid. So I'm, the, Catherine, I'm, I'm not clear exactly on how we should proceed here. So do we, do we nominate three? Do we have a person that nominates three or what, or should we?
So you can do it by nomination, there's nothing that, that dictates how you vote as long as it's an open vote, okay? But the, the recommendation that I made before, that multiple rounds, is just typically the way you guys have voted in the past, where you do two rounds and narrow down the candidates that way. But if you would prefer to do nominations, then council members can make nominations and you can vote on those nominations.
Let's do nominations.
So the, yes, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Well, this may be a longer version, I don't know, but is there a way we could vote on each person individually?
I, I would recommend that probably the most efficient way would be, because that'd be hard.
Two votes, yeah.
By the time you get to the end of the list. So maybe if you go through each person, you say your top three picks, Cindy will collect them and out of those top three picks, we'll take, we'll tally up what the results are and then we'll do another vote on the final round. We're going to vote twice. So you each, so we'll start at one end, let's say Frank will say, I nominate, you know, he'll just pick three of his top candidates and you'll pick three, Randall will pick three, Cindy will tally all of them and we'll probably take like the top three votes from that and, or, no, 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 it'd be like the top five or so, the top five and then we'll do, and that'll be the final round. And then the final round, then you'll go back and just pick your top three.
So we have six candidates.
Okay, so I get to pick three right now. Okay. Doug Cohen, Kirk Suther and Kathy Worthington.
Ready for me?
Councilwoman Reed.
Doug Cohen, Kirk Suther, Kathy Worthington.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Doug Cohen, Warren Hart, Larry Winchester.
Thank you, and, and I'd like to just take a second here and thank everybody for coming and I want to say that, that this choice that you've presented to council is, is a difficult one. It is, there's, there's shades here, small degrees of separation. I think you all would do really well on the, on the committee and thank you all for being here to participate. My, my top three would be Doug Cohen, Kirk Suther, Soother, excuse me, and Kathy Worthington. Council.
My, my top three are Warren Hart, Doug Cohen, Kirk Suther.
And my top three would be Doug Cohen, Kirk Soother, Kathy Worthington.
Thank you.
I say it appears that we have a pretty, well that's, all the, from all the ones that got a vote. It'll just be the exact same results, so should we say that the top three, we have two for Warren Hart, six for Doug Cohen, five for Kirk Soother and four for Kathy Worthington and one for Larry Winchester. So it appears that even if we went to vote again, it would still be Doug Cohen, Kirk Soother and Kathy, Kathy Worthington. And now we would need a motion.
Yeah, to nominate those.
To nominate those three.
Three.
Madam Mayor? Or Pro Tim? I, I move that we nominate, do I say their names?
Sure.
Okay. Doug Cohen, Kirk Soother and Kathy Worthington to.
Second.
They're moving things along.
We have, we have, we have a nomination and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing them please, call the roll.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hachez.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, one last thing is, we need to identify the two council members that will also serve on the committee.
The, is that, the mayor appoints committees, doesn't she?
Well, I think we should probably vote for them, we usually do in the past when we've had these committees. I believe Brandon Smith and Mayor Pro Tim Hammack have expressed interest. If that's still the case, then I would like to have a nomination for that. I think, I'll probably handle this one since you're on here.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a nomination?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
I make a motion that we nominate Brandon Smith and John Hammack for the city council seats on the Canyon City Energy Franchise Committee.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion?
Do I have to vote on myself?
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Dennehy.
It better be a hearty yes.
You can vote no.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hachez.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
You've made that vote easier for me, I.
That was a hearty yes. So thank you council members, thank you Canyon City Energy Future Representatives and citizens, we really appreciate your time and willingness to commit to serving our citizens and pursuing the best possible outcome for our energy future in Canyon City. So congratulations to you and thank you to everyone who applied.
And I think your first meeting is at midnight tonight.
We will now move on to the latter portion of our meeting. First, I want to say thank you to Mayor Pro Tim Hammack for covering for me. It was my son's graduation night for receiving his scholarship and distinguished honors for graduating from high school. I got to see part of it, but not all of it. But coming to choose a new council member to replace our revered former council member Jim Meisner was pretty, pretty important too. And I was really pleased with all the applicants that came to apply for this position and thank you again to these citizens for the time and commitment that you're willing to make. It is a really big job. It takes a lot of time and commitment of your life and from your family, so thank you for your consideration for doing it. We will do a similar process, we're going to invite all of the candidates. Let's make sure if we have everyone, is Daniel Dick here? Daniel Dick, Brandon Hamilton. Richard Lombardi.
So. Believe he's online.
We believe he is online. Phil Lund. Amy Schmizer, is this Schmizer? I shouldn't know how to pronounce your name by now. Schmisher, oh, okay. Randy Smith. And Andrea Stein.
Via Zoom.
Online.
She is via Zoom as well. So we're going to invite you all to go into the conference room, we'll bring you out one at a time, it'll be randomly selected. We'll give you three minutes to give an introduction to yourself and why you want to be on city council, you'll be questioned by council. And then we might have a short discussion and then we'll do a similar vote just like we did for the Energy Futures Committee. So good luck to all of you. Okay. Richard Lombardi, if you wouldn't mind.
Brandon, can you promote Richard?
I'm here. Hello?
Hi Rick, thank you, do you have a camera on your device?
I do.
Yeah, if you would, if you're able to, if you can turn it on, it would be nice to see your face.
Well, I'd like to, I don't know how to do this. We're, it didn't ask me.
If you, usually there's like a little picture of a camera.
Oh, I see it, I see it, okay.
Perfect. Thank you for joining us via Zoom, we sure appreciate your flexibility.
Well, thank you for having me. I came down to visit my friend and didn't realize we were going to have this meeting while I was gone, so accommodating me is, is very nice of you guys, so anyways, my name's Rick Lombardi.
I'm giving you three minutes and I'll give you a 30-second warning as you come to a close and then we'll start our questions.
All right.
You can go ahead and start.
My name is Rick Lombardi. I live in Canyon City for the last five and a half years, recently moved to Dawson Ranch from up off of Oak Creek Grade. My wife and some of my friends encouraged me to apply for this position. My background has been business, I've built several different direct mail companies, I've been in sales. I grew up in Denver, went to East High School, served in the Navy, got drafted and joined the Navy and went to Vietnam, came back, I think it's, I mentioned that in my letter, I didn't like the politics of Denver, it changed quite drastically and being a young kid out of, out of the military, I went to where I could find a good job. I'm interested in, in doing things for the city. I worked with Jenny down on Main Street on the beautification, building those boxes that are sitting out in front of the many of the stores. And my wife and I, I got, have eight grandchildren, I have four kids, or three, my son just retired from the Air Force as a lieutenant colonel and moved back to Texas, so we're kind of here by ourselves. There's a few things I'd like to see, probably the beautification of the city. I've driven around a lot, I've noticed where some parts of the town are starting to look pretty shabby and living up in Dawson Ranch, we drive by a lot of those areas and I'd like, like us to, you know, promote a more of a beautification of the city. I don't know what else to tell you all.
That's good, we'll go ahead and start with questions, this time we'll start with Dolly and work our way down.
Sure.
Hi Rick.
Hi.
Thank you for, for joining us on your vacation. What do you feel the city's biggest asset is and how can you help support that?
Well, I've grown, I've grown up in large towns and one of the attractive things about Canyon City is it's small. You know, we had what, approximately 20,000 population, not counting the ones in prison. And I like to see the fact that you can meet your neighbors, you can see people in the stores, I love that part of living in Canyon City.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Rich, this is.
Hi Rich, this is Tim Dennehy.
Hi Tim.
I'm going to ask you, as you look at Canyon City and you, you know, you look at our, our business district, you know, Royal Gorge Boulevard and our river corridor. What do you think is the most important right now as a focus of really trying to encourage any type of building or development?
Well, I think the downtown area, which I guess that'd be the Main Street, we need to continue to see that, you know, be more modernized. I think along the river corridor and attracting more people from a tourist standpoint, we should encourage guys to come and build some type of businesses along there. As far as the Main Street, I guess that's Highway 50. I, I understand that they're talking about some enlargement of the city, of the street, is that correct?
Not so much enlargement, but just changing the, the traffic lanes and doing some new structuring, yes.
Okay, so that's a great possibility because you think about all the people that are coming from two and four, you know, from Grand Junction all the way through and vice versa, we get a lot of traffic and I noticed we got a couple of new restaurants coming in. A lot of tax revenue that can become part of the city if we could have more of these type of food and restaurants built there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you Rick, this is John Hammack. The, I'm, I'm interested Rick in what you think that the top three issues facing the city are at present.
Well, the top three city issues would be, man, there's so many little things. And I couldn't tell you the top three. Probably, probably the revenue stream, how we get our money. Taxes for us people. And the, yeah, that's about the two I can think of off the top.
Thank you for that.
Hi, Rick. This is Brandon Smith. How are you?
I'm well. How about yourself?
Good. I just wanted to know what your stance on recreational marijuana is.
I'm against it. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, Rick. This is Mandy Reid. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mandy.
During this past year, council has had the opportunity to weigh in on many important topics. What is one of the topics that is of great interest to you, and how do you plan to advocate for it?
Well, as I put in there, I just retired. I've been traveling all over the United States for the last, since I moved here. So, I haven't really been involved in a lot of the local stuff. I, I listened to your last presentation on the Energy Franchise Committee, and I think the communication to the voters, you know, from somebody that, from the outside, sorry for moving around, I think the communication between the city and, and the residents, we need better communication skills. I, honest to God, I, I voted against the franchise. I read a little bit about it, but I didn't get a lot of other information. I think for the city to communicate things to the, to the residents is probably one thing that probably needs to be improved a lot better. I think I heard a guy say there's a lot of people that are complacent. I've done a lot of the reading and stuff on, like on the elections and the people that I'm voting for. But somehow, we got to get better communications out to the people.
Thank you.
My question is going to be, what do you feel is Canyon City's number one attraction that would make people want to, whether it's a business owner or just an individual wanting to come back and stay and live in Canyon City?
Well, the reason I'm there, the number one reason, is I like the pace. I like the size of the city. The fact that a traffic hour we have maybe have to sit through one light. I'm not really sure, being a business owner in town, what our tax structure is or incentives that we give to businesses. But from a, from our standpoint, as, as someone had moved here five and a half years ago, I was just very pleased with the, the location, you know, all the little festivals we have. I think that's really important to, to promote that.
Thank you.
I have some questions, too. Rich, Richard, how many Canyon City Council meetings have you attended or watched on media since January 2021?
Absolutely none.
Were you involved in any way in giving input on the Canyon City's Picture 2040 Master Plan?
No.
And how much time, if any, did you spend on canyoncity.org or studying our master plans or other resources?
I've, I've read the charter. I've looked at some of the other stuff. Since I decided, you know, that I wanted to come, I wanted to, you know, learn a little bit more about the city, about what's going on. So, most of it's been in the last month.
All right. Thank you, Richard, very much for your interview and your application. We're going to move now on to Andrea Stein. If we can make her a panelist, please. Andrea, it looks, okay. Can you turn your video on as well, Andrea?
Okay.
Thank you. And we'll start with your three-minute introduction.
Okay. It's very dark here. I apologize for that. I am sitting in an earthship outside Taos, so it's very dark.
Well, good for you.
My introduction, I have, I've got about 30 years' experience as a publishing professional and a newspaper reporter. I've covered literally hundreds and hundreds of council meetings in Ohio, where I, most of my newspaper experience was. The most important thing that I bring to the table, though, is that I did run against Mr. Meisner in 2018, I believe, the last time he ran for council at large. And the five candidates, I was third with the number of votes. And there were over a thousand Canyon City residents who voted for me for this position. And over the years, I have, I've listened and sat in on many council meetings, and I really appreciate very much the attention that Mr. Meisner gave to the detail of the workings of council and how he made sure that he understood everything and that the people around him did, too. I really, I would, that's something that I would aspire to if I were in that position. I believe in teamwork. I believe in identifying what works and amplifying that. This is a beautiful town. I've lived here for four years with my husband. I'm semi-retired. I'm an author. And I would, I, there's so many wonderful things about this area that I would like to be a part of making things work for you. That's it.
Thank you, Andrea. This time, we'll start our questions with Councilmember Dennehy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you look at Canyon and you're looking at, you know, Main Street, Royal Gorge Boulevard, the river corridor, what do you, what would you put as your priorities? Or, you know, what do you think is the main thing right now that, you know, council and the city should be, should be focusing on?
Well, I think the small businesses in this town who suffered through the COVID pandemic, they need as much support as we can give them.
Okay. But that doesn't really, do you, do you look at any, any sections of town that we should be focusing on a little bit more or, or that you would like to see developed?
I think that your downtown, your Main Street, is something that has a lot of opportunity. And I would like to see us kind of interact with other towns who have done similar things with their, their old downtown area to bring tourism into that space as well as recreational areas. I think you, the Riverwalk area is fabulous. I've never, my husband and I travel all over because we do a lot of mountain biking and hiking, and I've never, there's just nothing like your Riverwalk in other towns of your size. It's, it's incredible, the, what's, you've done there, and I think that should be, that should be amplified. But there needs to be ways to pull that tourism over to your Main Street, and, and that's something that should be focused on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Andrea, this is John Hammack. What do you think are the top three issues that are facing Canyon City right now?
Well, I, as I just said, recovery for the business structure from the long year of trying to deal with COVID and trying to serve customers in, in any way they could to survive. I think they need our support now, and I think that should be the number one priority. The second one, as I said, is focusing on teamwork and communication to folks in the community. That's a good one. And amplifying what's working. Fine. Identifying the things that are working for you and amplify those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Andrea. This is Brandon Smith.
Hi, Brandon.
I was just wondering your stance on recreational marijuana.
Okay. Well, Brandon, I don't have one because, first of all, I have never used it because I am deathly allergic to it. I would end up in the emergency room, have asthma. Secondly, I am a commercial captain certified through the U.S. Coast Guard. They have me on a random drug testing program, so I can't even sample it if I, if I wanted to, you know, walk on, you know, do something exciting for a change. But I don't have any stance on it at all because I think it has to come from the community, what they want.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Andrea. This is Mandy Reid.
Hi, Mandy.
During this past year, council has had the opportunity to weigh in on many important topics. What is one topic that has come up this past year that is of great interest to you, and how do you plan to advocate for that?
I do, I have not been able to attend in person the meetings, but I have attended a minimum of at least a dozen and probably 18 to 20 meetings and looked at a lot of what you've been doing online. And so, I think what you're working on with the river corridor is really important, and I think that's one of those things that need to be amplified because it seems to be working so well for you right now. And so, that's something that I think that would, you know, that I would be interested in, in helping with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Andrea, my question is going to be, because you, you brought it up when you were talking, where do you feel that we, as a council, have failed to communicate with the public? And why do you think that's happened?
Well, when the, I think the franchise vote that you've discussed a lot this evening with the people who are going to be serving on the committee, actually, when that vote was coming up, I had three or four people, and I'm not very well-known at all in this community because I've only been here for four years. I don't know a lot of people, but four different people emailed me and called me wanting to know exactly what the vote was about. And so, what I did was I sent them all the information that I had researched. And I, I know it's expensive to send out information to the public, but there's, there's a lot of different ways to approach that, and maybe, you know, we could have some sort of big community public meeting where people could, you know, just ask their questions. That, that might be a good way to go.
Okay. Well, you said you've been here at least long enough to know that in that timeframe that you've been here, we had numerous, numerous meetings and discussions and talked about this franchise from the day one, but when we first learned that we were going to have to make a decision whether to continue with that franchise agreement. So, apparently, it's really my opinion, also, the public has to become aware. We can't knock on everybody's door and say, "We're going to have a meeting tonight. Please listen." We can't have the paper put every day saying, "They're going to have a meeting. Please listen." In my opinion, I would hope that, along with you and the rest of the public, would take the opportunity and the time to really look at how much time we, as a council, spend to try to communicate with the public, not just for the franchise one, but for everything that we do, whether it's the river corridor, downtown Main Street, or anything like that. But I do appreciate what you did say with regards to the fact that some people came to you and asked you about stuff like that. So, let's hope that you continue to be involved with what the city is attempting to do in the, for the future.
Thank you.
Andrea, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Oh, wait, Dolly. Sorry. Thank you.
Hi, Andrea. Dolly Gonzalez.
Hi.
Hi. So, what do you feel is Canyon City's biggest asset, and how can you help support that?
I think that if, if you're looking at an asset that's really contributing to who we are and, and where we're headed in the future, I think it's the people. And you have a really good core of volunteers in this community, very high-profile volunteers who have demonstrable success, like the fishes and loaves feed the people. They're, they are incredible. And that, and it's just, that's just them. There are other groups in this community that volunteer their time to help the community, and I think that's your, that's a big strength.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Andrea, since January 2021, how many Canyon City Council meetings have you attended or watched on the media platform?
I would say approximately 18, but I'm not really sure because I spend a lot of time listening and, and looking at, at, I all, I look at every, everything that you put out in writing about, you know, the, the outline of what you're going to be doing at the meeting. But to actually come to the meetings, I think it was a minimum of 12, somewhere between 12 and 18 that I actually attended through Zoom.
Since January 2021?
Yes.
Were you involved in giving input in the Picture Canyon City 2040 Master Plan?
I've gone to meetings, and I'm not really sure, there's, we went to a meeting about Route 50, but I don't know that that was a part of your master plan.
Okay. And how much time have you spent on canyoncity.org or studying our master plans or other city resources?
Oh, I would say because of my involvement in a lot of citizen action groups, I'd say somewhere between 10 and 20 hours.
All right. Thank you, Andrea. We appreciate your time today.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Cindy, our next candidate will be Amy. Hello, Amy.
Hello.
I'm going to start out with your introduction.
Awesome. First of all, thank you so much for the opportunity, and thank you all so much for your service to our city. My name is Amy Schmisher. I moved here in 2017. I love Canyon City. I've really made it my home, and I think that this community has so much to offer in terms of a historic downtown, amazing people, and incredible natural resources. And I'm really happy to have made it my home. I actually just sold my condo in DC, and I have bought a home here in Canyon about two years ago. I work for the U.S. Department of State. I've worked there for the past 15 years in foreign affairs. And I think that giving back, whether it's through public service as a profession or just in your, in your life and in your heart, is really important. And here in Canyon, I have the privilege and the honor of serving as the president of the Boys and Girls Club of Fremont County, the president of the Fremont Center for the Arts, and also on the board of Star Point. And all three of those, those organizations and those missions really mean a lot to me, which is why I selected them and why I give so much time and effort to them. Since deciding to apply for this position, you'll have seen me frequently in the audience because I think it's really important to listen and learn and understand what you're getting yourself into before actually throwing your hat in the ring and actually applying. So, I've really, it's been a, a great pleasure and an honor to, to listen. So I've really, it's been a great pleasure and an honor to listen to some of the issues that have come before you and to hear kind of how you thoughtfully and carefully consider them and the questions that you ask and kind of the ways that you think through this. I would say that I think that while our community is amazing and while I am so proud and honored to call it my home, that we do have a lot of opportunities for growth and a lot of opportunities to create an even brighter future. And that I would love to be a part of bringing that into reality by harnessing resources, fostering connections, and the, you know, lack of affordable housing, public safety, attracting and retaining businesses. Just there are a lot of community stormwater, as evidenced by the rain tonight. That there are a lot of important challenges that are facing our communities, but that there are also a lot of important resources that city council is already bringing to bear and can be brought to bear even further. So I think efforts like Picture 2040, where you're creating this strategic vision of where you want to take Canyon City, is incredibly important because you're able to not only just thirty seconds? You're able to not only just focus on the number one priority, but you're able to craft that strategic vision for the future. So I'm very interested in the position. I'm humbled and honored to be here before you tonight and I just really appreciate your time and your consideration.
Thank you. We'll start our questions with Mayor Pro Tem Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi Amy, glad to see you here tonight. The, although you gave us four kind of issues the city is facing, challenges that we're trying to deal with. The, are those your top three? Or if you were going to choose three out of those? Or what would you say that the top three issues facing Canyon City are right now?
Thanks so much for that question. I would say definitely affordable housing, attracting and retaining businesses and economic growth. And probably, probably public safety. I think that that's kind of the foundational, fundamental issue of anyone either looking to build a business or build a life and a home and a family. Thanks so much for the question.
Thank you.
So to piggyback off of public safety, what's your stance on recreational marijuana?
So I work for the federal government. So I have never consumed any marijuana and I would never, never want to partake personally. I think as a broad public issue, I believe in individual rights and individual liberties and people not being, people's rights not being constrained as long as they aren't impacting anybody else's rights. When it comes to the issue of something like recreational marijuana and whether it should be allowed in the city of Canyon City, I think that that's something that I would need to do a lot of listening and learning and understanding about. I've listened and read some of the past public commentary on it and I think that there are pros and cons to both sides of the issue. I don't know that, the numbers that I've seen some people put out there about how much tax revenue it could raise and how much it could help our city. Like I'm not sure where those came from, so I'm not sure how factual those are. But I think it's certainly something that is worth listening to and understanding because it is a really hot topic. And if, you know, I think dollars are short and resources are important. So I would say, as I would say with most issues, I want to listen to people who are affected by it. I want to learn and I want to research what's already out there and I want to make the best informed decision that I possibly could for constituents, were I to have the honor of serving in this position.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here Amy.
Thanks Mandy.
So during this past year, council has had the opportunity to weigh in on many important topics. What is one of the topics that you have seen come across our dais that is of great interest to you? And how do you plan to advocate for that?
Ooh, that's a great question. I think that there are so, there are so many very, very important topics. Probably for me, it comes down to being business-friendly and being perceived as being business-friendly. And I think that a lot of that goes to ordinances and regulations and planning and, you know, the idea of like a regional business authority. And kind of how do you, how do you not only make it easier for businesses to want to come here and want to grow here, but how do you also make people understand that that is what you want? Because I think sometimes the public perception is even harder to change than the reality of what you're working on. And honestly, I think that if you made it, if you made it easier and if you made it simpler and if you made people feel like, "When I come to City Hall, I don't get a yes or a no, I get a, here's how we can help, and here's how we want to be involved, and here's how we want to partner," that that would go a long way towards fixing some of the issues that I think are still around kind of the attraction and retention and actual forward movement and progress when it comes to business growth.
Thank you so much.
Thanks Mandy.
My question is going to be, because of the COVID that we've dealt with in the city and everything else, and now the situation that, because you mentioned the business community, what they're having to deal with with regards to the prices of everything going up because of what's happened with the COVID and everything else being there. How do you feel that the city has done with regards to helping out our local business people as much as we can with all the restrictions we have? And do you think we've done enough? Or is there something else we can do to help make it even better?
Thank you Frank. So I have honestly heard nothing but positive things about what the city has done when it comes to COVID. I think that you've been very proactive and very helpful in distributing Cares funding and, I mean, Brandy Fowler in terms of being a resource for folks on how to actually apply for grants. I think that we've seen a lot of flexibility. I mean, everything from the woman who owns Brothers talking about how food trucks are allowed and how that really helped save her business. And then Amy talking about, you know, the partnership between Fire It Up and Brews and Bikes and kind of the flexibility that you've allowed in things like food trucks. And also the resources that you've provided in people like Brandy Fowler, helping not only with city grants, but also, hey, here's a great grant that might apply to your organization, whether it's a nonprofit or a business. So from my perspective, I've heard nothing but positive things about how the city has administered resources and opportunities for businesses and nonprofits and people when it comes to COVID. I think that it was a very challenging, and it is a very challenging time for our state and for our country and for the world. And I for one was, as somebody who serves in leadership positions on several nonprofits, was blown away by how the city has responded and by how the city has helped. I think that in terms of what more could the city have done? I don't know, and in part it's because I'm not, you know, without being privy to every conversation, I think it's hard to know what avenues have, or what avenues were considered and tried and discussed and wouldn't work. I was particularly struck by that while sitting through some of the conversations and the interviews related to Black Hills because I know just how much work their Pro Tem Hamrick and Councilwoman Turner put into those negotiations with Black Hills. So I think sometimes if you don't have the inside perspective, it's hard to know what was tried and what more could be done.
Thank you very much.
I hope that answers your question. Hi Dolly.
Hi. So what do you feel is the city's biggest asset? And how can you help support that?
So I would say like the city of Canyon City, it has to be the people. Like you have so many hard-working, passionate, caring people who work for the city of Canyon City. So I would always say staff. In terms of like the city, I would say our natural resources, because they are bar none. I mean, anywhere, anywhere I've been, and I've been to I think forty or fifty different countries, like, "We live in a beautiful place." And every time I drive anywhere, I just see the mountains and I'm so incredibly grateful for where we live. I mean, if you are here in the summer, and so I bring international folks here, year-round, when we are not in the middle of a pandemic. And frequently when I'm talking to my colleagues at the embassies overseas, I'm like, "Do you want to come in the summer for rafting? Are you more of a skiing person? We're about ninety minutes from Monarch. Do you like hiking or biking? Because we shouldn't come, you know, in April, but if it's not going to be super muddy, then I think that, you know, this is the time for you." So I would say our natural resources are next to none and that it makes it a truly fantastic place to live because of all of the options that you have. And on that point, also the future of the Riverwalk and the future of the Riverfront District. I think if you were to ask me that question ten years from now, that's what I would say.
Great, thank you.
Hi Amy.
Hi Tim.
Got a little follow-up to that, and actually it wasn't developed that way. But as we look at Canyon and we look at downtown, the, you know, Royal Gorge Boulevard and that, and the river, the Riverwalk and developing businesses down on the river. What would be one of your priorities of those areas?
Priorities in terms of businesses to develop along the river or priorities amongst those areas?
I guess as kind of saying, putting a little energy, you know, right now, what would you like to see in this town as far as where you'd like to see some stuff happening?
Okay.
I think he answered it already, but.
I mean, honestly, I would probably say the Riverfront. I think that if you had restaurants there, if you had a little bit of shopping there, if you had some movement and life there, that that could, I mean, that would just bring an entirely additional aspect to our community. Because I think you want, you want it to be bustling, you want that, you know, you want people to be there, you want it to be happening. I think that the gorge is already a huge, huge attraction and it's phenomenal. And it obviously brings a lot of monetary resources to the city. So I wouldn't necessarily put the priority there, but I think that that Riverfront, it's an uncut gem waiting to be polished.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Amy, since January 2021, how many city council meetings have you attended either in person or on a media platform?
Oh, I would have to count. I've been to every single one that's happened for the past, I guess, three or four weeks in person. And then, oh, prior to January 2021?
No, since January 21.
Oh, since, okay. And then I would say before that, I would probably listen to them either live or the recording. It would depend on the topic and whether or not it was of interest to me, but I would say probably two or three a month.
And did you participate in offering input in the Picture Canyon City 2040 Master Plan?
I listened to it and I've read through it. I did not offer any input, I didn't go to the meeting at the abbey.
Did you do anything online, like take any of the surveys?
I believe I filled out the survey online. But to be honest, I do not specifically recall what I suggested, which makes me concerned that I do, that I may not be accurately remembering that.
Okay, that's fine. And then how much time do you think have you spent on canyoncity.org or other resources or studying master plans in researching for your interview today?
I would say I spent on average an hour before each meeting, reading the materials that Cindy had posted online. And that I've spent approximately six to eight hours each week reading through things such as the city charter, adopted in nineteen forty-five with fifteen sections.
Whoa, did you even know that?
Reading through Picture 2040 and just reading through kind of recent city council minutes for ones that I hadn't attended before, before April of this year.
Excellent, thank you Amy, really appreciate it.
Thanks so much, Ashley.
I think that wraps up your interview for now. Cindy, can you please bring in Brandon Hamilton? And while we're waiting for Brandon Hamilton, I actually have a question for you, Brandon. Is, are Mr. Richard Lombardi applicant, is he still online or has he left? He's gone? Both of them have left the meeting. I just want to make sure that we note that.
Good evening.
Sorry, that was, I thought you were talking to this Brandon.
Oh, you're still here. So I'm going to give you three minutes and I'll give you a thirty-second warning to introduce yourself.
Okay.
Oh, and you can take your mask off as well because you're being publicized on.
All right, I didn't want to get yelled at for that one. All right, so my name is Brandon Hamilton. I've lived in Canyon City for most of my life. I think thirty-three of the forty years I've been alive, I've lived here. So I do have some vested interest in the town, part of the reason that I'd want to be on council. We moved back here in 2007, purchased a house, and I have three kids that have been raised here since. Right now, I teach at the high school and my wife is opening up a business this summer. She's a therapist. Will be opening up a practice. So we have, you know, quite a bit of interest in the direction of the town, the future of the town, I guess, and, you know, ideas about where we would like to see that go and how we'd like to see it grow. If I was chosen for the council, I think mainly what I would like to do is to work with the experienced people here already to help, I guess, Canyon City grow. I've always thought that there was a lot of potential for the area in terms of what it could be. But for it to grow in like a reasonable way, I mean, not just like completely unchecked growth where that could get out of control or something, but, you know, reasonable growth, I guess, is the way I wrote it down anyway. And so really, that's all I have for introduction, I would just leave that to questions now.
A quick question, what do you teach at the school?
Oh, I'm an English teacher.
Okay. Excellent, we're going to start our questions with Councilmember Smith.
So as a teacher, what is your stance on recreational marijuana?
Well, for all of my students, it's a hard no, they're all way too young for that. I think that in terms of recreational marijuana, I would leave most of that, I think, to the citizens to decide something about where, you know, where they would want that to go in the town, whether legalized or not, if that was to be pushed any further. I do think that there are, as with most things, some opportunity and some negatives for, you know, legalization of that. Obviously, a lot, well, what I've heard anyways, a lot of the money from marijuana sales goes to different school funding projects, those kind of things. So I mean, I've got a little bit of bias there where I would be okay with more funding for schools. That's definitely, I think, a part of our government across the country that doesn't really get much funding or enough funding a lot of times. However, there are also a lot of issues that could come up with that. And so I think, again, similar to like what I was saying with growth, just some kind of reasonable, regulated look at that. I would not be hard for or against without hearing more of the facts and what people really wanted to have happen in the town. And if that could be done in more of a safe manner than, you know, just completely unchecked, would maybe be something I would be okay with. But I wouldn't take a hard stance right now without a lot of information for it either way.
And then just to piggyback off that a little bit, how do you feel that the city and other, other, what's the word I'm looking for? Departments handled the annexation of Rudd Park during school hours?
And so I'm not familiar with the whole process of how it was annexed. I know that it's been a pretty incredible asset for our school now. Going back into the time when I was in school at the high school here, Rudd Park was always kind of a, not the place that I wanted my parents to know I was at and not a place where I wanted my kids to be at. And so I've seen now with, with teaching there this year, I mean, I utilize Rudd Park as an extension of our school. And it's a, you know, it's a really, it's a nice addition for that. So as far as the whole process of how that happened, I'm not really sure how that all worked. So I couldn't speak to that too much. But I know that, you know, my supervisor, Bill Summers, was very happy to have that and has encouraged us to use it, you know, anytime the weather permits. And so it's been a, definitely a helpful thing, I think, for us to be able to just have more space to go outside, especially with the beginning of this year being, all the COVID protocols that we had, taking class outside was definitely a benefit, I think, and having that big park over there was helpful for that too.
Thank you Brandon.
Thanks for being here Brandon. So during this past year, council has had the opportunity to weigh in on many important topics. What is one topic that is of great interest to you and how do you plan to advocate for that?
Well, I think one thing I would like to see happen even more Well, I think one thing I would like to see happen even more than it already has been, I think there's been a lot of growth with this anyways, downtown development and this riverfront project that I've been hearing, you know, people have been talking about extensively for a couple of years now. I've always thought, you know, growing up here, you know, we'd go up to Salida or these other places, even Pueblo, had all this same river kind of access that we had, and why is ours so hard to get to or whatever? And so I'm really interested in seeing where that goes forward. So I would like to see, you know, things happening out there, restaurants, businesses, whatever. I mean, I always enjoy sitting by a river to have a, you know, sandwich or steak or something. So that would probably be one of the biggest things I would like to focus on and see happen.
Okay, you've indicated, you know, that you grew up here, went to school here and everything, then you left, and then you came back. From the time when you were here and then you left until you came back, what changes, specific changes have you seen with regards to the things we're talking about, with regards to growth, business opportunities, and everything else with regards to how to make Canyon City a better place to live?
Well, while I was gone, I guess, I mean, I grew up here and spent my entire first 21 years here. So then after I moved, it was the first time I'd seen much of anything else or lived anywhere else. And so there wasn't a lot that I knew different than Canyon City. I had the chance to live in a pretty nice little town, although it's right next to Nashville, called Franklin, Tennessee, and I saw a lot of similarities between Franklin and Canyon City, and just in terms of like the way that the city was kind of set up or whatever, you know, the looks of it, the old downtown area and stuff. And they had a really, like thriving, bustling downtown in Franklin, right off of their little square there. And so I do think that the downtown Main Street area could be a lot more like it was, even when I was a kid growing up here. When I was a kid, it was like a really cool thing to go downtown. There were so many different shops and everything that we could go to. And I did the same thing with my boys when we were growing up here, when they were babies, they're twins. We knew every shop on Main Street that had dogs in it because we would have to go down there and pet all those dogs. And I just think that Main Street could be a place in Canyon City that could become like a, you know, like the jewel in the crown or whatever, some kind of thing that would make people want to come here more or stay here more. We do have plenty of people that come here to visit already. I mean, I work in the tourism industry in the summer also, so I talk to people all summer long that are visiting here, and usually they're here for the day and staying up in Colorado Springs or something where they've got, you know, a different hotel to stay at, or that's where they found the most places to eat or something. And so I think that developing a few more things for that that would help people stay here longer on their trips, you know, maybe two or three days instead of just drive down for the day and do the gorge in a Jeep tour and drive back up would be places where that growth could be, the impact would be felt.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for being here. I have a question first. What kind of therapist does your wife?
Well, she's, I mean, just mental health. She's an LPC licensed professional counselor, so.
I work in early intervention, and I was hoping you'd say like a physical therapist.
Oh, no, sorry, not that.
No, that's okay. Well, that's great, though. Great that she's opening a practice. So my question for you is, I hear you talk a lot about what could happen in Canyon City. What do you feel is Canyon City's greatest asset, and how can you help support that?
Let's see, I think, well, to narrow it down to the greatest one, I think is hard. I think there are quite a few great things around here. I think that overall, it's a very friendly community, a very welcoming community. I mean, most of the people that live here have kind of grown up in this area that has, you know, receives a ton of visitors every summer. And so it's something that even though you hear people maybe make little complaints about the traffic every once in a while in the summertime, everybody's very used to having visitors. And so I think it's a very friendly community. I also think that our location geographically in terms of like recreation, things to do, outdoor stuff to do, and also the just weather is one of the greatest assets that we have here. I mean, people will hear that they can live in Colorado and also have 60-degree days in the wintertime. That's a very nice thing to have. It's not just always going to be cold and snowy.
Hi, Brandon.
Hello.
I'm going to ask you, as we look at Main Street, Royal Gorge Boulevard, and the river, you know, we all want to see different parts of town developed or, you know, built up. What would your priority be as far as looking at things of where would you want to see done? You know, they all can be done, but what would you put your main focus on?
Well, I do think that the river would be one main focus there. And then even farther down the Highway 50 corridor on the east end of town, I think there's a lot of potential for things to happen out there. I mean, there's a lot of space out there, and it seems like a lot of potential big areas for, you know, a lot of things to go into. So either along that river area or the farther east corridor of Highway 50, probably.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight, Brandon. What do you think are the top three issues facing Canyon City today?
Well, the way I understand it, or from what I hear people talking about anyway, I think that obviously the energy topic is one of the top three. I mean, what we were just listening to earlier this evening. I would also put maybe affordable housing being on that also. I know that I feel lucky that I, you know, purchased a house years ago so that I haven't had any issue with that, but that is definitely a complaint that I hear about a lot, or definitely something I hear people talking about a lot, is that it's very difficult to purchase a house right now. And then the last thing I would put, you know, I had originally thought maybe it would be something like the homelessness issue, but I think that a lot of that has been dealt with and alleviated in the past year or so. I think there's been a lot of work towards that. So in lieu of that, I would say business development or this, like a rec center or something, you know, that I think would also be tied into that business development aspect of it.
Thank you.
Brandon, since January of 2021, how many Canyon City council meetings have you attended live or watched on a media platform?
So I've not attended any of them live. And in the past month, I guess, I have watched, I think, well, five since sometime in March. I went back a few weeks to watch them before these interviews tonight.
Okay. And are you familiar with the Picture Canyon City 2040 comprehensive planning?
Sort of, yeah. I wouldn't say like, I mean, not very familiar with it, but I know what it is.
Did you fill an online survey?
I did the survey, yeah. That's what I was just going to say. I did take part in that one, yeah.
Okay. And any other input did you offer during that process?
Other than the survey? No.
Okay. And how much time would you say that you had spent, if any, on canyoncity.org studying Canyon City or our master plans or other resources?
Well, in the past few weeks, I would say I've spent maybe a total of seven or eight hours looking at, watching the videos, reading up on the town charter and the different, like I looked at the 2A street development and the urban renewal. I'm not sure what that is, the urban renewal, I don't know what it's called, process or whatever, but that thing that we have going also for developing along that corridor.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That wraps up your interview. So welcome to have a seat if you wish. And next, we'll have Phil Lind.
Evening, everyone. I think I'm your 12th interview tonight, so Cheaper by the Dozen or something, I don't know, but I'm glad you're hanging in there.
Don't remind us.
Phil, we are going to time you. You've got three minutes.
Okay.
That you can use to introduce yourself and talk about why you want to be on council.
Okay, very good. So city council is something that I'm familiar with. I've served on councils and commissions in the past, and I'm wanting to give part of my time to Canyon City. Canyon City is going to be my home in the future. I do have some agenda items, though, and one thing I do want to acknowledge is Jim Meiser. Jim was an excellent councilperson, and I voted for him, and we talked offline a number of times, and I just have great respect for him. And so I do want to acknowledge that this is Jim's term. And so anybody that fills that, they can't be Jim, but they are filling somebody else got elected, and they're having that chance to do that. So I'm interested in a couple of issues. I'm interested in economic vitality for the city. I think some good things are happening with that, but I think there's also other opportunities that can be availed. And I've got experience with economic development and a lot of other stuff that I think would be helpful, both in Canyon City, but in my former life before I got here. I'm interested in the what-if question. What if, what can we do as a city to make it prosper? And I do believe that we are in for some challenging times, both on a global scale and on a national scale, and sustainability is part of that, of how do we make this city sustainable for the future? And those are issues that I'm concerned about. Of course, sitting on city council, you also have all the things that Ryan Stevens would bring forth, and the attorney, and all the things that are the general things, but I do have an agenda, and I'm not just going to be warming a chair if I get on the council. I do have an agenda that I'm wanting to bring issues forward and try to see what we can do as a community. And I mean that sincerely as a community. A councilperson is trying to pull in people from all different ways of thinking and doing, and we get a chance to, everyone express their own opinions and to make a difference in this community by bringing people together. And again, I do believe from my position that we've got some challenging days ahead of us, and we ought to be doing our best to make a difference. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Phil.
I beat the three minutes, I hope.
I'm going to start our questioning with Councilmember Reed.
Hi, Phil. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting for hours.
Yes, no problem. And I'm a morning person, so I might not do my best, but I'm going to try and do what I can.
That's okay. We appreciate it. So during this past year, council has had the opportunity to weigh in on many important topics. What is one topic that is of great interest to you, and how do you plan to advocate for it?
Business is something that is critical to me. And of course, I don't just mean development, and I don't just mean Scholastica. All of you are familiar that I'm involved with the Scholastica project. I talked to people today, and they're still concerned about how the city is presenting itself as compared to other cities. When people want to make investments into the city, they have all kinds of options to go other places, and Canyon City has got to be first as far as, or at least equal to, other cities to make it so they want to do business here. And that includes the culture of the city. One of the things that I'm concerned about with any culture as far as a government is that they don't view themselves as a gatekeeper. A gatekeeper is somebody you have to get past us to make a difference or to do your project. And if that's the mentality of any culture, as far as the internal staff of a city, it's going to be a real problem. What you need to be is a partner in that development or making things happen. And I have concerns from my own relationship with Canyon City government, that there are a little bit of culture going on that we're the gatekeeper, and that just has to go away. So that is something that I think needs to come from the council and with emphasis that this needs to change.
You say that you're coming with an agenda. Well, my question to you is, what is your main agenda, and then how do you feel you can work it there? Because even though it's your agenda, you're one of seven. Okay, so how do you feel you can work your agenda to coexist with other things that we've talked about, have dealt with, to make Canyon City not only a better place to live, but to accomplish the goals that we want to do?
Done it all my life. Been the person that has been the director of all kinds of commissions and meetings, and I always look for the win-win. How do we make it work? And so no one person on any council can set an agenda and make a difference, but all of us, when we come on council, you run for election, and as an elected person, people want to know what you stand for. And I'm going to be very clear about the things that I stand for. Canyon City is one of the best cities I've ever been in, and I've worked with a lot of them, both internally and externally, with the different projects that I think you saw that was on my list. And you don't get anything accomplished by being a person unto yourself. You convince people, you try to listen to them, they convince you, and as a together, a group, you come up with a plan and you make things work. And if you're just one person making, trying to make a difference, you're not going to be successful whatsoever. You have to work with people. So I do come with issues that I'm concerned about, but as far as agenda, it's got to be my way or the highway. That's just not me, and it's not how I've operated at any point in my life. And I've been successful getting things done.
Well, you kind of went around the circle that I asked because you never really did give me what your main agenda is going to be.
Oh, I gave that in my opening statement. It's specifically economic vitality, the what-if question, and the sustainability. And those are the three things that I want to focus on, is how do we make Canyon City sustainable? So apologize, sir, but I thought that I'd done that in my opening statement.
Hi.
My question for you is, what, no, what do you feel is the city's biggest asset, and how can you help support that?
The city has got a lot of assets. First of all, it's location and, you know, the external stuff. So if you're talking about the city government, let me just deal with the city proper as far as the whole us as a community. The quality of life here is extraordinary, and the ability to be involved with community and to be involved with the recreational opportunities, all of that quality of life stuff is something that anybody looks at, that why they want to live in a place and why they want to stay in a place. And if you're a child that's growing up, those are all great things. So I make a distinction between, here's the community as a whole, and then if you're asking about the government itself, that's a different thing. And there's really good professionals that operate on the city level. I bump into them all the time, and so my experience with the city government has been overall positive. And I can list departments, Patrick's department and Ryan and others that I call by a first name because I've worked with them. So there are some really good strengths here. Again, I think there is a different way of looking at some things as well, that we don't put everything on a government track, where the government track is simply, we're going to get a grant to fund this, we're going to have a committee do this. That's one way of doing things, but I think there's also a strategy that gets us away from just a pure governmental focus as far as doing things. So it's got a lot of strengths. I think there's some improvements that can be made, but I'm hip on Canyon City.
Thank you.
Hi, Phil.
Kim.
I have a question, just kind of looking at our different districts here in town, you know, our Main Street, Royal Gorge Boulevard, and the river corridor. And I'm kind of just, as a priority, what do you think as council and in that we should kind of be pushing for the city? We want all of them to develop beautifully. But do you see any that are maybe a little more important to the city?
The Main Street is absolutely critical, that it's prospering and thriving, and that's where people are going to be attracted to. That's what they compare with other places. So that has to work for sure. 20, or excuse me, the main drag coming down 50, that's people's impressions when they come through town, and it's got to work as well. You don't have to go off on Main Street if you're coming through town to get an impression. You've got to make that work. The river one would be a great one. I would put that as number three in my thinking on the process, because people are going to make their judgment calls based on coming down 50, and then if they turn off on the Main Street and see all the cars that are there, and it's thriving, and you've got First Friday, and you've got all the things going around, I'm proud to bring people who come in, because I'm not from here. I bring people in all the time, and I'm happy to show them certainly that area. The river has all kinds of opportunities. We're all familiar with what's going on in Salida and other places where they've got a very thriving area, and I think that is something that certainly can be an advantage in the future and will be, I think, in the next five to 10 years, just a fantastic place. It's going to take probably that long to get it up to snuff. But the Main Street is, you have to have it work, and because of the federal highway coming through here, we've got to make sure that's working as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here, Phil.
Sure.
I did hear your opening statement where you listed three priorities, I guess. The, I did, I did hear your opening statement where you listed three priorities, I guess, is maybe how I would characterize it, but are, do you think those are the three top issues facing Canyon City, or what would you say are the three top issues facing Canyon City today?
COVID is one. You guys didn't expect that, nor did we, and so, there are external things that are going to happen if I fill a term for two and a half years, which is remaining of Councilman Meisner's term. And I just see that we're going to get some unexpected things, and we've got to be ready for the unexpected. The, again, I think there are real challenges economically that the United States is facing, and it's going to hit everyone. And if we haven't stepped up to the plate, we're going to feel it. So, when you talk about business thriving, that is just because I was involved with economic development and everything, something that I certainly have a passion for, and we've got to make sure it's there. But we've got to be forward-thinking enough to know that there's challenges coming. I sat through the meeting tonight with the people that you're serving on the Electoral Committee, and those kind of issues are important as well. Citizens themselves have a right to bring forward different things and to make that an agenda. And then you just have good governance. Good governance is making sure that the bills are paid, you've got revenue stream that's coming in that works, all the good governance citizens for all the departments that are on a normal basis, that they get quality service, and they're happy with their government. So, that is critical. And just because I've got an agenda doesn't mean, and I use that with a small "a," not a large "a," they need to have good governance and be satisfied that when they come in, their taxpayers' dollars are being used efficiently, and it is working for them. When they walk in and pay their water bill, they've got a, that's got to work for them, and every other department in the city has got to be working as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Phil, and I do have a couple of clarifications.
Sure.
Go ahead, Brandon. Go ahead. Well, just, when you had mentioned about the government track, were you, you had also had mentioned grants and committees. Were you insinuating that you're anti-seeking grants?
Nope, not at all. I've wrote, I think in my cover letter, I wrote 21 successful grants in the past and administered those, and they were several million dollars. And then I worked on, as the director for Regis, which I also listed on, there was 14 million dollars that was part of grant funding as well, so I am not opposed to that at all. But if that is our only track, we are thinking one-dimensional and too focused on the way that government typically does things, because I think there's other opportunities to do things outside of a typical structure. So, I'm not opposed to those at all. Let's go get all we can, but let's not let that be our only solution, because they all take time, and they, you answer to parties outside of the government itself or outside of the community. And if you want to make a difference, you don't want to put yourself, so that's all you do is answer to some authority, either the state or the federal government, higher than yourself, and you don't have your own creativity as far as thinking. So, no, I am not opposed to them. Get them, but don't let that be the only solution.
All right. Back to you, Councilmember Smith.
Hi, Phil.
Hi.
So, talking about business and revenues and taxes, what's your stance on recreational marijuana?
I have never tried that, and I'm not opposed to the state having it, but it is not something I would pursue in Canyon City as an opportunity. There's just other opportunities that people can go, they can drive to Pueblo, they can drive to Colorado Springs, or wherever they want to get that. So, I would probably, in fact, I will say definitively, I would be on the side that just medical marijuana is all we would have in Canyon City. There's other opportunities to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Phil.
Yeah, my pleasure.
For your application.
And can I just say one last thing?
I still have some questions.
Okay.
I don't get a vote, but I still get to grill you.
Okay, absolutely.
You had, probably, pretty passionately, you had some strong feelings about your personal agenda coming on Canyon City Council, but it takes more than your personal agenda to run a well-rounded community that includes, you know, a good canine program, and police certifications, and stormwater, and the energy and community pride, quality of life. And I would like to know where your interests lie, and would your passion be as strong in taking care of our streets and filling potholes and all of the other things that...
I was Finance and Personnel Committee Chair for the government that I worked for, and I've served in many other positions, and I think I addressed that when I talked about good governance, that all those things are important. Again, if you're running for the council, and I consider, I'm almost running for the council right now, because instead of the vote of the community, I'm getting potentially six votes here. And so, I think you want to know what I'm up to, and why am I doing this, and what difference can I make from my own experience and et cetera. So, I don't apologize for saying I've got an agenda, but I am also well-aware and have, from my experience, served on multiple committees where people bring their own issues. And again, that good governance is all the things that are, that the administrator has in his report. Here's the administrative agenda and all those things. You do your homework, you make sure you're up on it, like Councilman, the former Councilman was, and Jim, and again, he was always asking the questions. I've been before him, and he asks the questions as well. So, he was a model for paying attention to all the details, and I'm a detailed person when it comes to that. But I also want to make a difference, and I just don't want to be sitting in a chair and not making the difference. If that's the case, if I'm only forced to talk about what is brought to me, and it's only reactive, like you're a judge, and you just give your own best judgment, that's not what I want to do. And if that's what the councilperson is expected to do, count me out. I just soon have an agenda that is outside of that, because I really want to make a difference. As a, can I give one example? I don't want to document the time, but I think many of you know Mr. Rowland, Brad Rowland, and he and I are setting up LLC to make it so that 50 people can buy cryptocurrency, what's, what our plan is, and that's Bitcoin, et cetera, and we're viewing it, okay, we're going to spend 50,000, we'll raise that in, and it's going to go up at some point. We hope to get to be 500,000. You get your money back, you double it, and you also, the 400,000 is going to be invested in Canyon City. Those are the kind of things that I think are creative. I would call that an agenda. It's me wanting to bring my creativity, whatever that is, and make a difference, and I'm hoping each one of you have an agenda. I am not offended in the least that Tim ran on business agenda, the rest of you had an agenda, and that is exactly what we want. I don't think we want a bunch of passive people sitting on the council and not have a thought about what they want to make, accomplish, in the very limited time that we all get to serve. So, I'm, that's my position.
Okay. Phil, and since January 2021, the beginning of this year, how many city council meetings have you attended in person or viewed on a media platform?
I probably am at five or six. I was viewing the council meeting tonight before I came here, and there's been numerous times that I've been on Facebook watching you as well. I haven't attended only the ones where we had a public hearing. My last one before you was February 15th, of course, when we had the historical thing, and Jim was sitting there and asking a number of questions prior to that. So, it is something that I do pay attention to, and I pay attention to what is in the Canyon City record, as far as what the council's up to, and I have numerous conversations with people all the time about what's going on in the city and what the council, including today. I had a, someone was talking about the new Kentucky Fried Chicken coming in, and how the city was responding to that, and we had a conversation about that. So, your agenda and what's going on here is something that is frequent in my consideration.
Phil, did you participate in any way in offering input in the Picture Canyon City 2040 Comprehensive Master Plan when we were seeking public input?
I did not.
And how much time would you say that you committed to studying the canyoncity.org or other online resources such as our master plans in preparation for this interview?
I know that my master plan fairly well, but I also know your ordinances very well, compared to some of your city staff when I had meetings with them, you know, Plan Development District, PUD, et cetera. But I'm also familiar with it. It has, I think, 21 articles in it, and I'm familiar with most of those. A couple of them are reserved for the future, and so, I have read your ordinance, and I have paid attention to each of the details. I, without using the word too much, but I pride myself on doing my homework and making sure that I understand the situation. There's been times that I thought the council went off in a direction that I wasn't certain was right, quite frankly, from reading your ordinances, not so much this council, but the prior one. And so, it's, it is something I'm going to put the time in, and I'm going to make sure that I'm well-prepared for each meeting. Budgetarily, the administrators' reports, and also the ordinances, as far as what we can and what we cannot do.
All right. Thank you, Phil. And that concludes your interview.
Okay. I just want to say one last thing, which is, I don't think you can make a bad decision tonight. We were sitting in there and having our conversation. We thought about just pulling straws, because each person is, I think, well-qualified, and so, whatever happens tonight, I'm cool with, because I know you've got some really good candidates when we had that conversation. For a while, we were talking about, could we be the council and get you guys gone, because we were sitting around that table and thinking, okay, this could work for us. And I say that in jest, of course.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cindy, Randy Smith is next.
Good evening, Randy. I'm going to set the timer for three minutes as an opportunity to introduce yourself and why you're running for Can, for City Council.
All right. My name is Randy Smith. Running for City Council, not running for City Council, I'm asking to be placed on City Council because I love Canyon City. Now, what I want to say about my background is that I have grown up in Oklahoma, joined the Air Force, spent 21 years there, retired as an Air Force Sergeant, came to Canyon City after that, got a job with the Colorado Department of Corrections, was an administrator for eight years, and then I was lured over to the feds. So, I worked in Florence for three years. That was a very interesting job over there as well. During that time, in 2012, my wife decided she wanted to go ahead and start a business. So, we started First Stitches over here, just not too far from here, which would, it actually did very, very well. During the onset of the fed job and our starting of the business, we decided to expand in Pueblo. So, I couldn't do both at the same time. I couldn't save lives at the feds and run a quilt shop with a bunch of ladies asking me about quilts and how to fix their machines. So, I chose the ladies over the inmates, as it were. Anyway, during this time I've been in Canyon City, I've been as active as I possibly could be by being a part of the Board of Administration and Planning Commission, and most recently as the, one of the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce. So, I'm here tonight just to say, hey, I'd like to go ahead and do a little bit more, do my part, and hopefully be a part of the council.
We're going to go ahead and start our questions with Councilmember Hockes.
I agree with you that that was a smart decision to go with the ladies and leave the inmates alone.
It was a tough decision. Sometimes it's a little tougher than usual.
You, in a way, where your wife shop is, in a sense, that is part of the River Corridor area that Canyon City has looked at with regards to how we want the future in that part of the area to look like. And I would like your focus on what you think about that plan with regards to the city looking at the River Corridor, and then also the Highway 50 Corridor, because those two, Highway 50 Corridor and the Riverfront Corridor, in a sense, kind of hug you in where the shop is. And so, what's your feeling about both of those?
That was actually why we got involved with the city in the first place, because obviously, we're on First and 50, not too far from here. So, my wife's first committee was on that Highway Corridor Committee, and she would come home and say, we're going to do this, do this, do this. And I said, are you sure you want to do that? And she goes, well, I don't know. At that time, we were also involved with the River Corridor. We were told that that particular area is called the Golden Triangle, okay? And then, we got involved with the River Corridor, and it was Title 16, Title 17, that we're going to revamp the river, the concept of it, and make this a pedestrian-friendly, as far as the nuances of bringing in more businesses, tourism, making that like a focal point. Yes, we have the downtown business, which is great, but we also want some sort of a tracking mechanism to get some of these tourists over into some of our, you know, Veterans Park, to the train, to the trails, things like that, and mesh what is around Highway 50, I guess. So, we wanted to get involved in that. My feeling is, I think, that turning Veterans Park into a major, I'll say a park, but some sort of event center, bringing in more trails, and you're obviously familiar with the Project 2040 that we've been working on, I think that's a very futuristic and very doable plan that we can see as far as bringing Canyon City together into the future. And I think that the Highway Corridor is going to be great. I'm not so sure about the medians. I'm not thrilled about them right now, because that's going to affect me as far as the business. I would also like to see, if I can put this out there, I still like to see a red light down on First Street to slow the traffic coming into Canyon City, because to me, when we're sitting there on our porch, we're watching some of these trucks barrel in, and one of the biggest examples, the greatest examples is the semi truck going through Ty's Place over here with Royal Gorge Rafting. I don't know how semi did that, but it basically took his business apart. But yes, I do think it's a, it's going to be great for the community to see this growth, not only just here, but also further east.
I guess it's my turn.
If you wish.
Hi, Randy.
Hello.
It's good to see you here. My question for you is, what do you feel is the city's biggest asset, and how can you help support that?
Our biggest asset is going to be our future growth. I think we're still trying to brand ourselves. We're still trying to figure out who we are, what we want to be. So often, I've heard that Canyon City is a prison town. I want to go ahead and get away from that, because I know, yes, we're a prison town, and it brings in a lot of money through CCI, a lot of that, but I want to see more tourism, and I want to see Eight Mile grow a little bit more. I'd like to see lodging tax pass, so that we can bring in more tourism, and that we can bring in some of this money into the tourism, into the Fremont County Tourism Society, Council, so that we can actually build more. If you're not asking for assets, but you're asking for liability, is that one of your questions, possibly?
No.
I'm going to talk about that anyway.
Okay.
One of our liabilities is that we don't have enough housing here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, if it's 0.06% or whatever it is, as far as our housing capacity, we cannot grow as a city until we build more. And with the economy the way it is, with 200, 300% increase in wood and things like that, it's going to be harder for us to build. So, I think that our, our expansion with possibly using the Abbey, 187 acres, something over there, if we can build that into some sort of a viable community, and Scholaska, Mr. Lahn over here, if we can go ahead and get that started and be a part of the housing, then we can make that into an asset, okay? The more housing we have, the more people we can bring in, the more future we'll have.
I like how you turned that around on me. Thank you. Randy?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Randy. I have a question just regarding, I mean, and some of this has been talked about, you know, as we look at, you know, Royal Gorge, Highway 50 Corridor, downtown, Main Street, and the river, what would you like to see, just in your opinion, where would you like to see the development? to see the development kind of going first, or where do you think the most important of those three would be?
As I said, I think we need to stop people who are coming in from the west to know, instead of barreling down to 50 and heading on over Pueblo up to Colorado Springs, I think we need to stop people here. I think a stoplight at First Street with maybe some sort of Wayfair sign that says, downtown Kansas City, turn left right here, that will stop people, at least think a little bit about it. We had talked about a walk bridge over Highway 50 to get them from the downtown area over to the, the park area, it'd be great, but I think we need to focus on the west side and then head east first. What we can do there, and we've already taken care of Costantino's, which is great, and I think the city owns that parking lot there, I'd still like to see that parking lot, and some sort of walkway across there, and I'm not sure what's being done with Skyline, because I'm not in the know yet, but I'd love to see a restaurant there, and with some decking overlooking the river, and to watch rafters and kayakers and tubers come through there, and then venture on down and have more businesses, and make that riverfront property a reality, so we can start businesses there and have our, I don't know, I think that's where I would start, is focus on our strengths, which is right here, and then head on down. And I think that the downtown business will follow after that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here, Randy. What would you say, what would you say are the top three issues that's facing Kansas City today?
The top three issues, well, number one is going to be housing. Some of the other issues that we're going to have to kind of focus on is getting the businesses back in sync after COVID. We've got to have a pre-COVID state of mind, so I think we're going to have to get a lot of businesses back into not, it's not going to be normal again, but to work with them. And whether you're a city or a business or anything like that, I think we're going to have to focus on showing people that we do care about them. There was a little problem last year all over the nation, okay, that the economy just sort of tanked. I think we're coming back up now. So I think that's the second problem that we need to get together with. The third, I think, would be more just bringing more money into Kansas itself and then bringing in the business, because I think if we bring in more businesses, which Mr. Stevens has been doing an excellent job, and also Rick, I think that we can bring more people in and not necessarily make it a futuristic town, but make it a more livable town.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Smith.
Yes, I have read the Charter. It's not the best reading.
I'm not going to hit you with the Charter, but what's your stance on recreational marijuana?
My stance on recreational marijuana, I think, not that I, like we said earlier, that I have a dog in this fight, but I believe it is, it's a moneymaker for the state, and people are coming here, and eventually, it is going to be a national moneymaker. Now, I think it was either last year, maybe 2019, that it was almost a $300 million income for us, just the state, not in Kansas City or anything like that, but the taxes collected with that, with that was over $30 million, and that all went to the state, you know, the state capital, and they dispersed it however they wanted to. I don't necessarily like the smell. Going through Pueblo every morning is like, well, I know what they're doing, but as far as me, I don't use it. I can see it for medicinal purposes. I think it has to be regulated. I think, obviously, it could be a drug that can be misused, and possibly, some say, yes, a gateway, some say, no, not a gateway drug, but my stance is, I, it doesn't matter, to each his own, I guess, as long as it's legal, which it will be legal, people have to take care of themselves.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging around so long, Randy.
Thank y'all, this is late, I appreciate it.
During this past year, council has had the opportunity to weigh in on many important topics, many of which you've already been a part of, but what is one topic that stands out in your mind during this past year that is of great interest to you, and how do you plan to advocate for it?
Let me see. Now, I like the River, I like the River Corridor project that we've been working on. I like the rework that House Lovell has been working on with us. I mean, I think it's been a great one-year project, and a lot of, we've had a lot of input, and I believe that the city's going to benefit from that. Listening to the previous comments about the electricity, about Black Hills, I think that's an issue that we're going to have to tackle, and it's not going to be an easy one, because there are some House bills up in the legislation right now that is going to affect transportation, and the transportation is going to affect electric cars, electric cars, power stations, things like that, and if Kansas City puts a couple of power stations here, who is going to pay for that? Is that going to be from the consumer? It's not like you have your credit card and you plug in, and then you plug in your car, and it's charged. The car itself, it's basically free electricity, but who is going to pay for the electricity? So I was wondering, is that going to be a Black Hills thing? But that's kind of something I was thinking about earlier, and there are going to be some registration fees that are going to be applied to the Department of Transportation next year, so our licenses might go up, so that's a little bit of a concern for me.
Thank you so much.
Randy, since January of 2021, the beginning of this year, how many Kansas City council meetings have you attended, either live or on a media platform?
Just the council meetings? Because you have all sorts of meetings. Every time I get a ding on my phone, there's a government meeting, there's a historical meeting, there's this meeting, this meeting. So if you're saying since January, probably about 20, and I'm one of about six or seven that are on there, and I have commented on occasion, you might have noticed here and there, but...
Okay, what about Kansas City Council itself, our Mondays and Wednesday meetings?
Probably about five.
And how, do you want to put a plug in for Planning Commission?
I'm sorry?
How, how, what's your attendance for Planning Commission?
Oh, Planning Commission, I have not missed a Planning Commission committee meeting in three years, maybe I missed one or two, but I have attended all those either through Zoom or in person, to include the joint commissions.
And Randy, what has been your participation in the picture Kansas City 2040 Comprehensive Master Plan?
My participation? Well, Jim Meisner and I argued about lighting on the River Corridor. It's just been simple input. House Levine has done a great job, so we've talked about, you know, signs, we've talked about this, we've talked about that, we've talked about possible bike trails, we've talked about what's going well in Kansas City, if they've used that map, which obviously you've seen.
Randy, did you do this survey online?
I did.
And you should probably point out that you're also in the Planning Commission, so you've been attending several of the meetings and the decision-making processes.
Yes.
Moving forward. In preparation for this meeting, how much time would you say you spent on kansascity.org studying the agendas, our master plans, and other resources?
Prior to this meeting, relatively little.
Okay, well, that wraps up your interview.
Ah, man.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all.
We're going to have one last, final interview. After that, council, do you want to have a little break before we go into voting? Yeah, you guys have been here a lot longer than I have, and it's, we better, I don't want to leave Daniel Dick there any longer than he needs to be, so. You need to stand up for a second. Thank you for waiting so long, Daniel, it's been a long, long evening.
Thank you.
But you better get used to it.
It's old, familiar ground for me.
Okay, well, we have three minutes for you to give an introduction.
Okay.
And talk about why you want to be in city council.
I am at a loss what to say, because I really didn't come prepared to make a speech in my behalf. I will tell you that this is a very wonderful, comfortable feeling. I spent two years on the council, and I spent four years following that as a mayor of a smaller village in this, and this, and to be here with the legal staff, the management staff, council, mayor, Mayor Protam, is very, very great privilege for me. I will tell you that there are four candidates that I think are eminently qualified, without any question, who have appeared before me. So this is perhaps almost unnecessary for you, for me to be here. They offer a great deal, the city will be in great hands with them, but I, I will make only one commitment, it's the same commitment I made for all my public service, I will try to do the very best that I can, that base every decision on what is best for the majority of the people that live there. It's the people we serve. When we lose track of that, we are no longer needed. That's my opinion, and my view. So I don't bring any genius, I bring a very interesting lifetime of experience, I feel very fortunate to have had the opportunities that I have, and have done the best I could with them, I would continue to do that if I'm privileged to have that honor. But remember, you have excellent candidates who have already spoken. And with that, I should be very brief, you waited long enough to come to the end of your meeting.
Well, we do have some questions for you.
Please.
And we will start with Councilmember Gonzalez.
Welcome, thank you for being here.
My pleasure.
My question for you is, what do you feel is the city's biggest asset, and how do you think that you could help support that?
I'm not going to suggest that I have any great, wonderful, brilliant capacity. I think the greatest asset this community, this city has, is not only its natural resources that it's surrounded with, which is wonderful, clean air, sunshine, good breeze at times, cool and warm, both, but not to the extreme. But I think that they have remarkable people, that I've had the privilege of meeting some of them, not many of the community, I'm not a real social person, but in my work and in, in my daily life, I encounter them, I think it's the people. Your residents, the people who work here in the city, the council, it's the people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Daniel.
Good evening.
As you look at Kansas City, you know, you really, we have three sections that, you know, we have some great neighborhoods, but as far as the business goes, we have, you know, Main Street, we have Royal Gorge Boulevard, and in the future, we're looking down at the River Corridor. What would be your priority there of those three? What would you like to see really get going in this town on, on those areas?
I'm kind of puzzled how to answer that, because with the advent that I didn't, I don't know anybody saw COVID coming, but it's here, it happened, and mostly, hopefully, it's behind us now. Whatever it is, it surely will be better in the year to come than it was in the year just behind us. That has really changed the, a lot of the retail aspects, and I don't know how it's all going to shake out. I would think that the heritage, the culture of the past, your history, and tourism, of course, is really what could probably be the most dynamic action, because people will again be free to move around, hopefully, completely. It'll depend on us, I'm fully vaccinated, have been since mid-February, it, you know, the more of that that we get, the less likelihood that we will have of a reduction again, but I would hope that tourism could kind of lead the way, but it may be that the riverfront will open up so much new that it will feed, they will feed each other, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
Daniel, thank you for being here tonight. I know you've been in town basically since December of 2019, as if I understand your resume correctly.
Yes.
And, and it's a, it's a little bit difficult to say, because we've had, pretty much since that time, been dealing with, with COVID.
Yes.
Type issues, but what, what do you think are the, the top three issues that are, that's facing Kansas City today?
I think in the neighborhoods, and I, I think it's very difficult, because it's so hard to get everybody to see things alike. It would be really nice if we could see more pride, personal pride, in their property, in the way they present theirs. I've had a real fight with grubs last spring, and when I was able to get a handle on that, I was very pleased, and I have ever since that time spent more money on water than I'd like to spend, but at the same time, it is, you can tell where my place is because of the way it looks, and hopefully, the roses will do the same, and we finally got the deer to quit eating the rhubarb, I think it was pepper, that was put on, and I would hope that, that there would be an element, we could create an element of pride in attractiveness in property, and I'm sure that the landscaping industry would love that, too, but I'm not quite sure how to impact, or how I would go about trying to influence something beyond that. I think I'd learn in time, I'd be glad to listen, try to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for going last, it's, it's not the easiest. What's your stance on recreational marijuana?
I, I, when I was elected to the council, the question of marijuana medical was on the ballot. I said, it won't pass, my wife said, it will. She was right, and I was wrong. I was against it, I don't care what color green it was, I was against it, but I wanted to hear and learn, and so I got a book by Dr. Hill, it's about that thick, I read everything in there about medical marijuana, she had about 25 years of history, and researchers, and so forth. Then I got calls from people in the, in the neighborhood, and they told me of their experience. Many of them said, I won't tell you who I am, because I don't want to be outed, I know how it is to be outed. During that time, I met a lady who had talked to my wife, and she was very troubled and really struggling in life, so I went over and talked to her. She was barely getting by, it was, she was in an almost new house, it was terrible, it was horrible. And when we left, I said to my wife, I hope her husband isn't beating her. She looks like an abused woman to me, I'm very concerned about that. I'd like to jump forward two and a half years. I'd like to jump forward two and a half years. We had a community potluck. She says, "You ought to, you've met this lady before. You gotta meet her again." It was the same lady. I didn't know it. I said, "Do you, I remember the number." I said, "The last three digits of your address, are they 108?" "Yes." I said, "I remember you, but you couldn't even move. You're bouncing. You have a life. You have a career. You have a job." She says, "And I got rid of my husband." I said, "Okay." But she had a life. She's full of life. She told me at the time that she was under the care of a doctor who's the best pain specialist in Metro Denver. And he had told her just recently, he was not going to treat her anymore because his oath of office was, "Do no harm." He said, "Your organs are failing. I know because the pain medication to make it so you can get through is so great that your organs are, are dying on you. I have to send you to a marijuana doctor." I said, "Well, how's that going?" She said, "I don't know. I just started, but I think there may be hope." Well, I didn't believe in magic. She was a living example of the possibility of appropriately-used medical marijuana. And I worked hard to be sure that we had as much limitation on our ordinance that we could, so that nothing would get out of hand. We didn't want to be known as Drug City. The result of that and many other experiences of people I've met is it was very, very possible, positive.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there. During this past year, council has had the opportunity to weigh in on many important topics. What is one topic that is of great interest to you? And how do you plan to advocate for it?
I would, I've already sort of addressed that. I would really like to find a way that, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to do it. Find a way where we get neighbors to talk to each other and to care about each other. And when they, that we leader gives out, they could help each other. If they can't fertilize, maybe somebody else could spread the fertilizer for them. Some way to where we could all be more interested in each other. I think it would have a lot of peripheral positive effects. But how to execute that? How to get that moving? I'm not sure.
Thank you so much.
You're back.
First of all, I'd like to tell you that if my wife would have been here and heard what you said about people taking the time to take care of their property and make it look good and everything else, she'd stand up and give you a standing ovation. That's, that's one of the things that she's the same way with regards to Canyon City in some areas. But I know it happens every town, not just Canyon. I'm gonna give you three scenarios. And what I want you to do is pick one of the three and explain to me why you think that that one of the three is the most important. The first one is the Highway 50 corridor. The second one is housing. And the third one is downtown Main Street.
I would choose housing because housing at this time in our history and is, that's not exclusively, we don't, we're not number one on this. All around us, the cost of housing is going up. The beautiful part of housing right now is the cost of the financing. What a gift to see interest rates go down as they have. That won't be there forever. It'll go back, but it'll take some time. The, the ability for people to own their own home is critical. Without that, they're forever dependent. And I have seen that. I have seen that eyeball to eyeball with people after people after people. They either don't have the funds to buy something or they pay a very high rate of rent. And if, you know, what you might rent here for $1,000 would cost you north of $1,500 and maybe $2,000, the last I heard in, in Metro Denver, for example. And I imagine the same is true in the Springs, in, in the large population centers. I think that would be, you know, if people don't have a safe place to live at home, it's not a good day for them. And it's not a good night. Thank you for the privilege of being here. I wish you the very best and I hope you get exactly what you should have.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're back.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. It, it has been a while for you and our council members. We're gonna take a little break. Five minutes, but I want to charge you that there should be no conversations about the candidates or how you want to vote, that that is to be saved for public comment. So, in five minutes from now, we'll come back and begin the vote. All right. I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. Brandon in IT. I see we do have another panelist. I'd like to have us know, see, be able to see who that is. Okay. Thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it. It's not easy to be an elected official and to serve our community. And you just had a really big dose of that in our long meeting tonight. And being grilled by the city council from the side of the dais. That is never a super fun experience. I hope you come out better for it. And no matter what the results are of tonight's vote by the city council, I'd like to advocate for each of you to consider being involved in local governance. There's lots of opportunities and it's a good building block. Brendan Smith, you're an example of that as you started out on Planning Commission and moved your way up. And Phil, you had mentioned the considered coup in the, in the conference room. And if this had been during the height of the pandemic, we may have just handed it right over to you guys. But we are a really committed group and it's, it's a pleasure to serve on this council. Every single one of our council members that we have currently are excellent, amazing teamwork. We all have a similar vision for the future of Canyon City. And no matter what the vote comes in, I'm, I'm sure I can tell that we will be well represented by having you on our board. With that, I would like to also charge you to put in the time. It takes a lot of time to speak your mind and to hold our local government and each other to the highest level of integrity. And with that, I would open up, if council has any comments that they would like to make or say before we go to the vote, you're welcome to. So, Councilmember Reed?
So, I just want to share with everyone here, and I seriously doubt anybody is watching this at 10 o'clock at night on Facebook, but maybe tomorrow. I really struggled with this process. I really believe that the power that we have as people is in our vote. And so, this was very challenging for me to think that, you know, we as elected officials were going to be the ones that were selecting another elected official. And so, I just want to share that with everyone. Whether you're like-minded or not, it has been a growing experience for me to sit on this side of it. I think that government transparency and accountability is crucial to the survival of our country and of our city. And so, I really do appreciate all of you. Originally, I thought, "Man, it would be nice to just get appointed and not have to go through an election." But after sitting here through this evening, I think the election might be the better way to go. And so, I would like to encourage, you know, all of you, no matter how the vote is, that when elections come up again, if you still have the passion that you have right now for the agendas and things that you believe in, please be part of the experience with all of us because there's really nothing better than being able to serve your community. It's a way to be able to serve your family, to be able to serve those that you love, and to be able to have really good conversations with people that you respect, even when you don't agree. So, I just wanted to share that and thank you all again for just sticking it out this evening. I appreciate it.
Any other discussion from council?
Yeah, I just, I just want to reiterate and kind of echo what Mandy said. I definitely struggled as well. And just know that I've been in your shoes. I, I interviewed for an appointed position and I was not selected. So, that kind of fueled my fire a little bit more to get more involved with the lower-level committees before I ran. So, definitely don't think this is the end of the road if you're not selected tonight because it was a process for me. But I'm glad that I went through that process and that I wasn't granted the appointment because I definitely learned a lot more about council, the city, the constituents that we serve, and myself. So, thank you again for sticking it out tonight.
That's a good point, Brendan. I, Jim Meisner and I both also interviewed for an open council seat way back in the day and we also didn't get it. But we ran for elected office and got on. So, like you. Mayor Protem, Tim Hamrick?
The, well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just do want to thank all of our candidates. I really do appreciate each and every one of you being here tonight. This is, this is a difficult decision. There's, we have such sterling candidates and sterling people here tonight to, to try and step forward to help the community. I do appreciate that and I thank you all for being here.
Any more discussion from council? Then what we'll do is have you each select your top two candidates and we'll narrow that down into a final round.
Just two?
Two or three. That says three there.
Do you want to do three?
Oh, no.
I'm just, it's such a hard decision for me, so.
Whatever the, whatever. I'm good either way.
Any recommendations, two? Okay. Top two candidates. This time, we will start with Councilmember Dennehy.
This is a, this is a tough decision, but I'm gonna go with Phil Lund and Amy Schmizer.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, in alphabetical order, mine are Phil Lund and Amy Schmizer.
I'm just, just from the, the discussion and the interviews tonight, I'm gonna go with Randy Smith and Phil Lund.
Oh, that's hard. I'm gonna go with Phil Lund and Randy Smith.
I'll go with Amy. Can't pronounce the last name. Messed it up. And Brandon Hamilton.
This always makes my heart beat when I do this. So, Phil Lund and Randy Smith.
Okay. So, we have five for Phil Lund, three for Amy Schmizer, three for Randy Smith, and one for Brandon Hamilton. I think we'll do, what do you recommend for the? Five for Phil, three for Amy, three for Randy, one for Brandon. So, we'll do the top three. So, now you'll only vote for one person. And the vote is for Phil Lund or Amy Schmizer or Randy Smith. This time, we will transfer down to Mayor Protem Hamrick to start.
And we're voting for one?
Just one.
I vote for Amy.
Randy Smith.
Phil Lund.
Can you say that one more time?
Amy.
Randy Smith.
I'm gonna go with Amy.
So, we have three votes Amy, two votes Randy, one vote Phil. And that is our final vote. So, again, thank you to every single one of our candidates. You're all excellent. Congratulations, Amy. We're happy and excited to welcome you onto the city council.
Mayor?
We have to have a motion.
After there's a motion, with a second and a vote. I would like to welcome a vote. Thank you, Catherine. Is there a motion? Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Madam Mayor, I move that we appoint Amy Schmizer, if I'm saying that correctly. Please forgive me if I got it wrong.
We, you will get it right soon.
I'll get it right soon.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? Then I'll call for a vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkes?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
So, when will we swear her in?
I would assume at the next meeting.
Wednesday?
Wednesday?
No, I think in the next council meeting.
It says that Amy wants time to invite family members.
June 7th?
Yes. June 7th will be the day. But we will definitely welcome your input in our meetings coming forth before then. Again, thank you all for sticking it through. Hope to see a lot more of each and every one of you as we continue to pursue local governance. Thank you so much.